I will call the August 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media is recording. If anyone on the panel is recording, if you could just unmute yourself and let me know. And if anyone in the audience that's calling in is recording, if you could just raise your hand, let me know. Okay, seeing none. I also want to mention that my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corente, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and I are all participating in this meeting remotely. Liza O'Reilly is going to be joining us later. So the next step is a motion to enter into executive session. And I just want to mention for everybody who's on the call, we will be entering into executive session and reconvening at 7:00 PM. So if you're here for the public part of the meeting, we won't start until 7:00. So with that, I will take a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session at 7:00 PM for the purpose of discussing matters related to the HEA, Unit A, collective bargaining negotiations, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's a second?
I'm second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Michelle Eyre?
Aye.
Jen Benham?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
Tim Dempsey?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, so we're going to executive session and we'll be back at 7:00 PM. Okay, it looks like we have the committee here. So we are returning to open session. We called to order earlier this evening and then went into executive session and we're coming back. I will just read this because, let's see, this, "This meeting is being held remotely in alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all participants of said recording." And it also looks like Jenna Manto from the Hingham Journal is recording, and I know Harbor Media is as well, as well as the Town of Hingham. If anyone else is recording, if you could raise your hand or unmute yourself if you're on the panel. Joe King, are you recording this meeting? Julie, could you unmute him?
I'm not recording.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, so next on the agenda is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as the agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please use the raise hand function on Zoom and state your name and address and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to: One, select and evaluate the superintendent; Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and Three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. Public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Okay, I see two hands up, so I'll recognize Joe King. Joe, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yes, Joseph King, 503 Main Street. I have a seven-year-old daughter who'll be attending East School in the fall. At the outset, just let me say, I am a strong advocate for parents' choice and I've offered my full support for that organization. I believe that the vote that this committee is discussing, the second part of the Zoom meeting tonight, is a fait accompli. I believe that they will impose a mask mandate. I have very little regard for the policy that this board will announce in the next few hours or the next day. I believe that members of this committee have not, in fact, done the research that's necessary. I think you've shirked your responsibilities to a great extent. You have relied upon a board of advisors and other individuals who have the same inclinations that the committee has, and I believe it's, in effect, an echo chamber that you exist in. Masks are ineffective as a barrier, we know that. Masks are harmful to our children, we also know that. The countries of England and Ireland, the Directors of National Health of those countries, have strongly urged that mask-wearing not be imposed upon children in their country. And I would ask, what does this panel know that they do not know, the countries of England and Ireland? Recently, in fact, today, vaccines were taken off the experimental classification. They were rendered, they were given the full support of the FDA, as I understand it. And so my question is, if you are going to mandate masks, then we, it seems to me, ought to mandate vaccines for our teachers. There's been very little discussion about that policy, and it seems to me one should, if one is going to mandate one thing, they should require, we should require another. It's not much to ask. In listening to the Zoom meetings that this committee has held, I'm struck by the fact that this community and the, and members who participated in the Zoom call, I'm struck by the fact that they seem to live in fear, in fear of a virus that, with respect to young children, teenagers and even younger.
You have 30 seconds.
The impact is minimal, and we know that. We should not live in fear. Those who say that masks are only there to protect others and not themselves is an absurd statement. If you want to, turn the mask inside out and get the protection that you say is only available for others. It's an absurd argument. This committee needs to do its work. Unfortunately, I believe it's already made its decision, and that is a tragic decision. For those of you who are due for reelection next year, I hope Hingham voters.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Lauren Berman. Lauren, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address, please. Sorry, I think the wrong person was unmuted.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Lauren Berman, 5 Pine Grove Road. So I have a question regarding teacher vaccinations, and I did reach out to a couple of you today and have gotten some answers along the way. However, the information that was provided is not correct. So what I am trying to find out is, first of all, I am fully supportive of masks. DESE, as you know, is going to be coming out with some sort of mandate, and in their, sort of what they're saying, they, in order for the mask mandate to be lifted, municipality needs to show that 80% of their teachers and students are fully vaccinated. So I asked the question today, how many of our teachers are fully vaccinated to date? And I was given a variety of different answers, and I heard from three people telling me that you do not have that information because it violates HIPAA. And I wanted to let you all know that that is, in fact, not true. So I did follow up with some of you and share information. My husband and I consulted with an attorney this afternoon to get the right information, and I have provided it in email. I'm happy to share it with the school committee. But it's not a HIPAA violation, so I would just be curious to know why the school committee and administrators think it's a HIPAA violation where you're getting that information from, because it is not, in fact, correct. And secondly, how are we going to track teacher vaccinations? And thirdly, how do we handle teachers that don't want to get vaccinated? Because the MTA, unions, big businesses, we've all seen it on the news, are requiring employees to be vaccinated. So I would just like to know answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. And I think those are things that the administration is working through. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So we will move on to number five, which is communications. Dr. Mises, do you have anything? Sorry, you're muted.
I do not. Thank you.
Great. Does anyone else have any? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. 6.1 is to discuss face covering policy. This is a second read, and act as appropriate, and that will allow us to vote if we choose to do that. So just background for all of this, the committee met last Thursday over Zoom and to listen to extensive community feedback. We've received a lot of emails, petitions on both sides of this about whether or not to require masks in school buildings. We also heard from some experts in the medical field and epidemiologists who advised us on how to interpret the guidance that's come out from various organizations in relation to the actual data here in Hingham. And by that meeting, at the end of the meeting, we discussed this and came to consensus that we would like to require face masks in all of our buildings to revisit this in a month, because we don't want to mask kids unnecessarily, but we all believe that this was the best way, the most responsible thing to do going forward, to protect our kids. And keeping in mind that the elementary school students, none of them are vaccinated yet. So the next day, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education weighed in, and they asked for permission to give the Commissioner the authority to mandate masks in K through 12. So it sounds like we were going in a direction, DESI is too now, but so the Department of, the Board of Education for the state is meeting tomorrow to discuss that and decide whether or not to give the Commissioner that authority. So thinking about this, we have a couple of options. We can table this and wait and see what DESI does, or we can pass it and revisit it either after DESI mandates or at the end of the month, like we were going to do anyway. So I just, my thoughts on this is, you know, I've gone back and forth about this, waiting for DESI, and it's been our experience that DESI has been a little slow. So tomorrow, what's going to happen is the Board of Education will probably give the Commissioner the authority to mandate it, but it won't necessarily happen tomorrow. It may be a little while, and there may be different risks. He may do something different than what's been in the press releases so far. And I was thinking about it, too. I've seen all the PTOs advertising back-to-school events coming up. Kids are going to be in the buildings, and again, I'm really concerned with the elementary school age, because they're not vaccinated. And the other thing, too, I was thinking about is with the preschool, they're not covered by the Commissioner's, his request. I don't know why that is, but that's probably the most vulnerable of our vulnerable students. So I was concerned with that. So I don't know, that's just my thinking on it, but I don't know if anyone on the committee wants to weigh in. Michelle?
Thanks, Carrie. Yeah, I was relieved on Friday to see that DESI had, or the Board of Education is recommending the mask mandate for at least K through 12. I would have liked to have seen pre-K. I'm, sort of a part of me feels like, is that an oversight that just, they didn't think of pre-K? But I think it just goes to all the research, all the information we've been receiving. You know, it just, it did seem like the most prudent measure to put in place. So I appreciated that DESI, or and the Board of Education is, it appears that they are moving in that direction. And I initially was thinking that we should just table it, because if DESI is going to mandate it, then, you know, then there's not a need for a policy, because, you know, it's a mandate, we can't change that, right? They mandate 180 days of school, we can't say, hey, but in Hingham, we're going to do 170 days. So we'd have to follow the mandate anyway. But thinking about, as I was, you know, looking around, driving around town today, I was thinking, oh, forgot about that, right? Like, tryouts are happening again, you know, back-to-school events are happening, we're going to be having meet-the-principal events. Looks like Dr. Struziero is already in a classroom at Hingham High School, so people are in, people are already in the buildings. So I, as much as I would have liked to have sort of tabled this tonight and waited, I'm not sure to a point that we can, given that effectively schools have already opened in Hingham, right, with events and activities already happening. I would say, though, that, and we could talk about it as we talk through the policy, but I think there's a way that we can tie, I think we had a metric of saying that we'd review in four weeks, but maybe we can modify to review upon DESI and the Board of Education's mandated that comes out later this week, hopefully.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to take a look at it after, because we really have no idea, other than, you know, a mandate, we really don't know what they're going to do. Does anyone else have any thoughts on whether, you know, whether we table it or not, and then we can talk about the draft?
I'm in agreement with Michelle. I went back and forth and figured we wouldn't have to vote on this tonight, given what we heard from DESI, but went through the same process as far as, you know, school is essentially in, we've got back-to-schools happening on the 25th, the middle school, high schools getting back in next week, so, and then the pre-K is not covered, so I'm okay with voting now and then, and having a look to what DESI does and then review our policy at that point.
Does anyone else have any? Okay, well, seeing none. Does anyone have any suggestions or thoughts on the actual language of the policy that we need to tweak? Jen?
First, I just want to mention, going back to the outdoor line in the policy, I think I asked a question last week about it. I just had it here, and then I got all my papers, oh, here it is. So further down, it says additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing. I am proposing that we take out, will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced, and continue to keep the following four bullets, but it would just say while outside and nothing past that. So you would take out when social distancing cannot be observed.
Yep. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, sorry, I just want to clarify. So Jen, you're suggesting that it should, basically that the mask policy is indoors and outdoors. Okay. No masks, correct?
Yeah, masks not required outside, is that right?
Correct. Okay, thanks.
Sorry. I think you're muted, so.
Yeah.
And my camera's at a weird angle, sorry about that. So the only thing is, that paragraph doesn't say outdoors, because we still need appropriate social distancing while eating and drinking indoors. So we need to make sure that that actually says... So are we just taking out the last bullet?
We could do that, or we could do, and then have a separate section that says when outdoors. Do we want to have anything written in here, no masks outdoors? We want to have that actually written, or just not?
So that paragraph says, would allow, so it says additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced during mask breaks. So we could have a mask break inside in the gym if it's raining outside when appropriate social distancing is enforced, which is what we did last year. We could have no face masks while eating or drinking, so when they're socially distanced in the cafeteria.
So that would be my, that would be my question, is that part?
Right. So then that, so we leave all of that, and then it's just that last bullet to be removed while outside when social distancing cannot be observed.
So were we saying? I thought Jen was saying that keep the fourth bullet, but could you stop it after the word outside? So face masks will not be required outside.
Yeah, that's how I read it.
Well, face masks will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced while outside.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's saying that you would have.
No.
No, but that's not what you're proposing.
That's saying, if you left it additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced. So that's saying.
So this is while outside, period.
Yes, but it's saying.
It's requiring social distancing outside if we.
That's what I'm saying.
We just get rid of the bullet altogether?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And then we probably want to get rid of paragraph three, the last sentence. Face coverings must also be.
Okay, yep.
Yep, so you have to strike that.
And do we want to write anywhere, masks and face coverings do not need to be worn outside, just as a separate line?
I'm okay with that.
I wouldn't, because then you're prohibiting somebody from optionally wearing one.
You don't want to remove. Masks and face coverings do not need to be in.
Are not required.
Are not required.
Carrie, are you looking at the draft?
Yeah.
Would you mind sharing that for the public, you know?
Oh, I don't have it on my screen.
You don't?
No.
No, I'm looking at two different computers.
Yeah, if somebody wants to share their draft, go ahead.
I am.
So basically, what we're trying to do is not require masks outside.
Yes.
And so if we get rid of those two, that one sentence, and then the last bullet, that should do that, and then if we want to say explicitly that masks are not required outside.
I don't think you need to explicitly say it.
That's true. It says in, within the school buildings and on school transportation, so we don't have to. Is everybody on the committee good with that, if we do it? Or do people want masks outside? Okay. Okay, is there anything else you want to do? Jen? You're muted.
So the third paragraph down, it's also written there as well.
Right, we're going to get rid of that. Okay. Anything else?
So Carrie, then the last sentence would read, "This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee and will be reviewed following the DESI mandate announcements and every four weeks or as necessary." Is that how we wanted to?
Yeah.
I have one more question, sorry.
Yep.
Just going back to that paragraph, the additional face masks or face coverings, are we?
Sorry, which paragraph are you on?
The one with the bullets, the one where we removed the while outside.
Yep.
Are we saying that they have to social distance during eating? And I just want to double-check that with administration on that. Is that what they're?
That is how it reads. That's a good question, though.
That's, I was also wondering, I was also wondering that. Are we, are we prepared for that? Are we, is that possible? Or should we? And I don't, and I know some of this may change, because we're going to mirror it with the DESI mandate, so correct, Carrie, so some of this could get changed a bit, but I'm just wondering, as we stand here today.
Yeah, Jamie or Gary, do you know?
So we will do our best, I'll refer to Gary as well to sort of jump in, but we'll do our best to sort of ensure appropriate distancing, but distancing at a particular foot requirement makes us a little uneasy. It's not in the DESI requirements, and we're not, we haven't been planning to reopen schools that way, so it's not that we can't ensure some level of distancing, but similar to when people go to restaurants, that's how we were conceptualizing it. It's not for a long period of time, it's during meals, it seems appropriate. We can coach the students on, if you're in a group of five or six, maybe half of you take turns, half of you can eat first, keep your mask on, you can put your mask on, leave there, half eat. We can sort of work with the students to be respectful and sort of work together as partners in their community. But at a policy level, I would just be thoughtful of where that gets inserted, just because we would really need to, the principals would need to go back and really rethink. So I think social distancing, reasonable, or sort of to the extent possible, or sort of some caveat there, as opposed to, I think people's brains go back to three versus six feet, and that's, I don't know that we're talking about that just yet.
So the language is required when appropriate social distancing is enforced. Is that okay, or is that, I think we're kind of wondering?
Go ahead, Carrie. It seems appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think that would work. One of the problems that we're dealing with even today is all our cafeterias are different sizes, different classes. It makes it very difficult for schools to manage. So I think that our schools, you know, with our principals guiding this, will do everything they possibly can to ensure that there's distancing. We can't ensure, you know, three feet would be optimum at this point, and I think that's what we're going to shoot for, but there's going to be instances that we can't do that. But we're going to, like Jamie says, this is a partnership, we're going to have, you know, have our students help us with this. It's just one of those situations that we're dealing with today. But I do, I do, I believe that there's, there's some energy to make this a reasonable expectation, but again, we have to manage it, and it's very, I think that Jamie's absolutely right. When you say a six-foot distance opposed to three-foot distance, three-foot was way more doable than six-foot, and anything less than that, we're going to have to monitor on a case, by case, school-by-school basis.
Is it, Carrie, I'm just wondering, is that, is that sort of a, is sort of during the mask breaks and eating, drinking, is that, I don't know, I'm thinking, is that more sort of building operation level that we don't need to policy around, right, that just masks are needed indoors and, you know, with exceptions for meal breaks? I don't know. I'm just trying to, for the students, to make this as much of some sort of normalcy when they're outside playing and when they're having, you know, when they're sitting together, because I know that's, you know, we're not trying to make it a horrible experience, so I don't know. I'm just wondering, is that, is it appropriate to not have policy language around that and lead that to an operational, more procedural?
Maybe. I'd like the clarity, but Liza?
I'd like to keep it in for now, and because one of the things, the research that I have been doing, that eating and drinking is still a concern when the students have their masks up and when they're talking a lot and sitting close to one another, and I think leaving it in is just saying appropriate social distancing and that we're going to continuously review it, and that after, you know, maybe DESI will say something about this, too. But I, we need to put it, I feel very strongly, we need to keep that in there, that our principals are using that as the goal of keeping everyone safe. And so, and we know even indoor restaurant dining, you have, it's a risk. That's why we have so many outdoor tables now at restaurants. So even just having an appropriate social distancing, we're not specifically saying three feet, not specifically saying six feet, but at least appropriate social distancing is giving the guidance for our principals.
I see what you're saying, Liza, and I agree that it is something that we have to be mindful of with the social distancing with eating and drinking. I'm just nervous having that in there with, I mean, based on last year and the high school. I'm nervous about the high school. Can they do appropriate social distancing? And I understand that that is a, an operational decision, but will they have to? But will they have to make that operational decision based on our policy that saying that they have to be social distance? And they do have different vaccine status then.
Yeah, I I think this is something we're going to have to revisit, but for now, we need, I think we need to have that guidance if we need to change it because we learned something more or we're really getting into the details of the operation. I think we do it then, but I think our goal should be we have some kind of physical distancing and I think the high school should make every effort to allow kids to eat at lunch outside. Just as they did in the spring. To you know, we've got to keep these kids safe. And we know that the eating and drinking is going to be a challenge. But I would feel better about keeping something in here and changing it later. So we set the tone of what we think is safe. And then we can come back and readdress it.
In keeping the current language in there, Liza, won't stop the school principals from being able to open schools. I think I believe that's Jen's concern, right?
Not, I'm not concerned about them opening schools. I'm concerned about the schedules having to be adjusted. And time being cut into any of their learning time.
Yeah, I like the idea of keeping keeping it in there too, just for clarity and everyone's thinking along the same lines when they're working through the all the operational things. And then we are going to revisit this when Desi comes out and they may say something about this too. So we have an opportunity to just take it out then if it doesn't make sense. But I don't know. What does everyone else think?
I agree. I think it should stay in for now. And then we can revisit it after we get D E S I guidance. Um, but I think it's, um, you know, you leave it in and you, you know, just having the principals think about the appropriate spacing so that they don't forget all about it.
And hopefully keeping it as consistent as possible to across buildings because, I mean, they're they're unique buildings, but we don't want, you know, Foster to do one thing, it needs to do another and South to do another, if we can avoid it, so.
Can we?
Yeah.
Can we strike the word social distancing? I think the that sort of language has been a little bit updated to be physical distancing or something or just distancing.
Oh, yeah. Let's get rid of social.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
All right, just, yeah, I'm just trying to, because I feel like the social distancing has the three feet, six feet, you know what I mean? Like, that's, I think, where people's minds are. When efforts can be made to distance versus like face coverings or face masks or face coverings will not be required. I forgot what I just said.
Michelle, I think I can just say when appropriate distancing is enforced.
I think the word is enforced is also it's hanging me up a little bit.
Yeah.
Imposed, implemented, I mean.
Implemented or available, something like that.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I like available.
Okay. All right.
Can can you read that how it reads now?
Okay, so just that paragraph?
Yes.
Additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate distancing is available during mask breaks while eating or drinking during physical education classes.
Yeah, I think that works.
All right, does?
Can I call on Dr. LaBella? And to see, do you are is that, do you feel like from a build, you know, you have more obviously physical presence in the buildings? And is that, do you feel that is that language appropriate? Does that fit fill the needs of what we're trying to do here, which is keep the kids safe, but also not restrict what's happening in the buildings?
Yeah, I I think sort of appropriate is is reasonable. I I think the principals are looking for some guidance relative to what appropriate might be, so we could go back and sort of reach out to some our expert, our expert, our our partners and sort of find out more. I I think what we learned from last year in this, the the building structures that we have is that three feet distancing at lunch becomes a logistical challenge that then impacts the school schedule. So that's not to say that we don't have schedules to dust off and pull up again. It's just that we the the with D E S I not referencing distancing, right? In the reopening plans, we had not been planning for distancing as we return. The question for us really was whether they have masks on or not masks. And I think to to the the reference specifically to P E is helpful. I also think we have to be thoughtful of chorus and music and instrumental, there's other places where masks would be, would sort of be removed or down now, the guidance from the Music Association is saying just sing with a mask on, that's appropriate, right? So we can make some adjustments there. And we do have some masks and can partner with the 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 music Parents Association to sort of get the masks to actually have the slit to insert the mouthpiece. So again, I think we're, we can make work whatever it is the committee chooses to go in terms of policy. It's just that that distancing piece, I hear Liza's point, and I think of all of our school principals are thoughtful of reopening as safely as possible and returning to full operations of school. But the other thing that D E S I has told us, and I think maybe this is a caveat we could sort of put in there, distancing to the to the extent where it doesn't impact kids' ability to go to school. Right? So that so so they did make reference to observe distancing as you can, but you you can't not have kids come to school or go to cohort or do anything other uh, other than bring kids in five days a week, full day, full days for 180 days. So that remains, uh, uh, from Gary and I's point of view, the ultimate goal is to a full returning to in-person learning. So I I again, I think we can make it work with that caveat of appropriate. And we will, to 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 Carrie's point, do our best to ensure there's consistency across the schools. But there are wide variations in the sizes of the cap, even within the four schools of the same level. They have very different physical plant structures. So we are looking, the principals we met last week at the planning meeting began thinking about sort of logistics of return and sort of other locations to offer kids. And so we're going to do our best to sort of give them a little flexibility, spread them out a bit. We have to ensure appropriate supervision, but I think we can make it work, right? So so it's really a matter of us having a sense so we can begin planning. I think anything, I think removing the social distancing from the social makes sense, because I think if people go back to this idea of three or three versus six feet, when really it might be 2.5 feet or or two, right? That might work in that building and other buildings might have more flexibility for three. But the high school, I do know Principal Swanson, when we met last week, did voice concern over a requirement of three to six for lunch, because that will really be a challenge. And we, last year, we utilized the gym because there was no in-person P E classes. But as we return, that space is now lost from operations of high school. So they're back to their cafeteria and outdoor spaces. Again, we can make it work, but I don't want you to worry too much. I mean, well, as long as we have appropriate guidance, we'll be able to implement a plan that gets everybody back to school. And that's our ultimate goal.
Right. I don't think anyone wants you to mess with the schedules. Yeah.
Would the lack of specific distance affect the test and stay program if we're talking about close contacts?
No. Gary, do?
Yeah, would would it be possible to just review, read through the the edits to make sure that everyone's understanding exactly what the changes are? I think that would be very helpful.
Do you want me to pull it up, Carrie?
That would be.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could.
I haven't made, I I don't know if I can make the edits, but I can see if I can pull it up.
Okay.
I can point, I've been writing it on my old school, so I can I can point out the edits.
Sorry, I know this is a little bit like watching paint dry.
As you go through this, but.
Yeah.
Can I share it on my screen? Do I have the ability to do that?
You should be able to if you go to the share screen thing at the bottom.
It's loading.
Yeah.
I think there's just I was filled the void here for a little bit, because I think there's just so many things that we're trying to accomplish, right? A sense of normalcy, but also keeping the kids safe and then putting the mask policy in place, but making for the students it feel more like a normal school year, you know, when they're outside and they're at lunch, when they're in music and the P E classes are back. So which is my editorial.
So unfortunately, I have these privacy settings on my computer that's telling me I'm not allowed to.
Sorry, Carrie, Dr. Mace just has his hand.
All right, go ahead. I can I can just read it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
One of the things that may help to to clarify how how translates is if maybe some of the principals who may be on in the audience that may want to give their perspective on how they may interpret some of the language that we're having some difficulty with. So maybe they were have the opportunity to implementation, that they're the ones that will have to make it work.
That's great, yeah. Thank you for joining us. So I can just read through it and if you could just chime in, you know, Rick or Derek, if you can just admit yourself if if something comes up that you have questions about or you think it won't work for from your perspective. So this is how it reads right now. The Hingham Public School District is committed to providing a safe environment in schools during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Maintaining a safe environment is critical to the district's ability to returning students to a full-time classroom learning experience. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, using the guidance and recommendations from the Center for Disease Controls, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the Hingham Department of Public Health, the district has established the following requirements, which will remain in place until further notice. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth and is compliant with the CDC guidance must be worn by all individuals in public areas within school buildings and on school transportation. This is the point where we struck face coverings must also be worn outside when social distancing cannot be observed. So that's not part of it. Michelle?
Sorry. And as you're reading that out loud, I, sorry, do you mind if we make edits while we're going through this? Okay, so I'm thinking here, maybe it is appropriate to put in, just to clarify, face coverings are not nest not required when outside. I feel like maybe we should put that back in there.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay, so all right, so this will read it. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth and is compliant with CDC guidance must be worn by all individuals in public areas within school buildings and on school transportation. Face coverings will not be required when outside. Okay, everyone good with that so far? All right, next, individuals may be excused from the requirement for the following list of reasons per CDC guidance. The individual, this is bulleted out, has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, or cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance. Okay, everyone good with that? Okay, in addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge, making it unsafe to wear a face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver. Everyone good with that so far? Okay, additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate distancing is available during mask breaks, while eating or drinking during physical education classes. That good so far? Okay, exemptions to this, exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances, such as for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. Face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some instances. Question for the principals on here, would you prefer it says principal or designate? Or just leave it with you?
I just leave it as principal.
Principal, okay. Next, a student mask, student's mask or face covering is to be provided by the student's family. Staff members are responsible for providing their own face coverings. However, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at a building or board school transportation without one. Good. All right, if students are in violation of this policy, the school building or principal or designate will consult with the parents guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate. Or if the student may be removed from the school buildings for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. Does that make sense to everyone? Violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school district facility. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee and will be reviewed following D E S I mandated, the D E S I mandate announcement in every four weeks or as necessary. Okay. Michelle?
Sorry, I'm the wordsmither for this evening for anyone who's keeping track at home. On the, just to clarify, so on the additionally face, the additionally where the bullet points of where we're not requiring the masks. So it now reads additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate distancing is available? Okay, so if you are having if it's a rainy day outside and there's not enough room and there's 200 kids in the cafeteria at the middle school, I just want to clarify, they will, they will be able to take their mask off when they're eating. And there will be staff on hand to make that as safe as possible. Not picking on Derek, just clarifying for for us that that's what that's what we're saying here, that that there may be, if space is available, we'll try to keep distance, but if it's not available, then there that will.
Michelle, I don't know if you were asking me to respond or not, but I would say that we're going to have 300 kids in the cafeteria without any outdoor seating that's being provided. So we need to be prepared for that. We will have staff on hand to monitor student interactions and make sure everyone's behaving in in the safest possible manner. But the reality is it will be well over 200 kids in our cap.
Okay. And I'm okay with, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to merge all the things we're trying to do, right? Safety, normalization, keeping the kids in school, all all of the above. So I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
I would like to request that, yeah, we keep this language, but that the district also determine how can we provide outdoor seating for lunch? That, you know, this is we need we didn't want to have to bring this mask policy back. Delta variant is making us bring this mask policy back. And we need to keep our kids safe. We need to keep them in school. If there's more things we need to do, let's try and do them. I I don't, I I really want to see, you know, I I hate having to go through this again. I hate having to do all this extra work, but I really want to keep the kids safe. And if that means getting tents again and getting outside seating for them for lunch, then let's try and do that if we can. I'm sorry, I I'm as upset as everybody else, but I think we just need to make every effort we can.
Gary? Gary?
I think we might be frozen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I my suggestion is that we work with our principals. Yep, my suggestion is, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, my my suggestion is we work with our principals. They can make recommendation to to central office and we'll do everything we possibly can to make those opportunities available. So we will be meeting with our principals as we have. And we'll just work with them to see where they are running to roadblocks and where some of these things are causing a problem. We'll do what we can to support that.
All right. Okay. Is everybody good with the policies I just read it? So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve policy. I'm so sorry, I have to find the reference number. To approve policy file E B C F A face coverings as proposed and read by Sharon.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So the policy's passed and we will be reviewing it. All right, next, 6.2, to hear an update on the work of the equity team.
Gary, just one second, is that's effective immediately?
Yep.
Correct, okay.
Hey, Dr. Jamie, I think this is you.
I just want to say thank you to our principals who jumped on and became panelists and a special welcome to Dr. Amanda Donovan, our interim over at East Elementary. Want to give everybody a wave? That's Amanda. And I know Greg LaMoffe is on the call, but he's not as a panelist as of yet, but Greg is on the call as well. And next time, hopefully in our next in-person meeting, we can have him give a wave as well, or Zoom meeting, so we can say hi to Greg, our new interim at Plymouth River. So I, thank you very much, Carrie, for bringing it over to me. I had very much hoped we would be in person so that my excitement and energy could be felt in the room, but I'm, I'm hopeful that I'll be able to, to convey similar excitement for what I'm about to share with you digitally, as I would in person. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to share my screen and the goal for this evening is to present the district's Equity and Inclusion Plan for Year One Implementation, which is the 2021, the 2022 school year. I will say as a preface before we begin, it is a fairly comprehensive presentation with a lot of information. I will do my best to keep it of a level of brevity as well to get lost in detail. But that said, I think it makes the most sense if, our chairperson, if you're agreeable, if I make the presentation and pause for comments and questions sort of at the end, just so we can keep the cadence and flow of the information. And actually Greg just joined, so hello Greg. You can see his headshot anyway. So that's Greg LaMoffe, our interim over at Plymouth River. Oh, there he is. Hey Greg, give everybody a wave. That's Mr. LaMoffe, our principal at Plymouth River School, interim principal. So, welcome to the team. And I will share my screen in a moment. Here we go. So again, I'm Jamie LaBilof. Those that might not know me who are listening in, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And I want to begin the presentation just to reset everybody on the call and on the committee and, and the school community, just to refresh everybody's memory of the district's mission, that our definition of equity, our vision, and our why statement, which, you know, when people say to me, why is this important? You'll often hear me respond with bullets coming from our definition of why. So to begin, the mission of the Hingham Public Schools is to provide a challenging and comprehensive educational programs in a safe and supportive environment, enabling all students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. In terms of equity, the very first thing our equity team did when we convened was to identify what do we mean when we say educational equity? So sort of our definition of the term. So educational equity is the shared responsibility of all members of our school community to address the opportunity gaps that exist within our society and impact our students' ability to reach their full potential. In terms of a vision, so when we actualize our work, we are hopeful that regardless of student background, experience, and knowledge, our students will be provided with opportunities and resources to develop socially, emotionally, academically, in a safe, supportive, enriching, and bias-free environment. And most importantly, why? Why is this work important? Well, at the top, a diverse, equitable, welcoming, and inclusive community is central to our mission. And we know that varied perspectives generate better ideas to solve complex problems of a rapidly changing, increasingly interconnected world. We believe all members of our community, students, parents, guardians, caregivers, faculty, and staff deserve the right to be fully seen, authenticated, and affirmed. This sense of belonging is a basic human need, which we, which must be met in order for any member of our organization to reach their full potential. We also recognize that each member of our community has different needs, experiences, opportunities. And by exploring these differences, we actually gain understanding, compassion, empathy for others. So just a little bit of background in terms of our equity working group. So the group was initially formed in 2019 and was charged with conducting an equity audit of the district's operations, programs, and services. The purpose of the audit was to better inform the district's multi-year equity and inclusion plan. And Year One Implementation is about to kick off just next week for the 2021, the 2022 school year. Each year, our working groups in the district do reset with new volunteers or members who might, who might want to sort of sunset their participation. So what you have here are the members of the 2020, 2021 Equity and Inclusion Team, myself as chair. We had Nez Carenti from the School Committee as our liaison, Dr. Suzanne Venice, our Director of Student Services, Carol Perez, our Director of MECO, Mary Eastwood, the South Elementary School Principal, Erica Pollard, our Director of Rural Languages, Ora Samiroff, a teacher at Plymouth River, Andrew Anderson from Foster, Melissa Goldman at the Middle School, Carolyn Bixby from Foster, Cara Roth at Hingham High School, Lindsay Troy at the Middle School, and Jada Nelson at the Middle School. So let's begin with the district's equity audit, the, the results of our audit from last year and action planning for the year to come. So just as a reminder to the committee, we were conducting an audit across 12 dimensions of resource equity, which are listed here. And running throughout all of these areas of equity, we were also holding a series of courageous conversations with affinity groups to ensure that the audit was actually collecting the feedback that we needed to ensure that we were focusing in the right areas. And our courageous conversation series kicked off in the spring. It will continue throughout the year. I'll get more into next steps later in the presentation. But they are occurring with our students, faculty, alumni, staff, administration, and parents. It actually have occurred with many of these groups already. I want to begin with the district in conducting our audit is partnering with the Harvard Rides Program. So what is Rides? Rides stands for reimagining integration for diverse and equitable schools. It's housed at the graduate, the Harvard Graduate School of Education over in Cambridge. And we are participating in the cohort with, it's Hingham, Situate, Marblehead, Weston, and Swampscott. The two directors of the program are Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson, who is actually the Hingham Public Schools Equity Coach for the Rides Programming, and Dr. Lee Title. And that what we're learning through that partnership and that training with Harvard is to really focus on a systematic cycle of improvement. And to do that, we want to talk honestly about inclusion and create a shared vision of equity. We want to collect data to see how current reality compares to our vision. We want to diagnose underlying causes of any gaps between vision and reality and plan one or more initiatives that begin to systematically address those gaps. We then want to act. We want to begin to implement specific initiatives with support and accountability. And then most importantly is to reflect, assess impacts and, and processes of work and then plan for the next cycle. So what I'm going to be presenting this evening are the results of our first year audit. And actually, before I go there, this is just a visual representation of that continuous cycle through equity. Talk honestly about inclusion and culture, sorry, talk honestly about inclusion and creative vision. And you can sort of see the, the, the points I just outlined sort of in a visual format. And again, the idea is this process is cyclical and it's ongoing. So this, this won't be something that we'll do sort of in a, in one training session and sort of call it done for the day. The reality is this is an iterative process that will grow and change over time. One of the major focuses of our training is beginning to understand systems of oppression that exist within society. So we essentially have been learning about the four I's of oppression. So we recognize that oppression comes through internalized systems. So that refers to implicit bias, unconscious bias, internalized privilege, interpersonal oppression, which we see manifested through micro and, micro and macro oppressions or stereotype threat, institutional oppression, which looks at explicit and implicit policies and practices that systematically disenfranchise one group over another, as well as ideological oppression, which has to do with concepts of race, racism, privilege, white privilege, supremacy, whiteness, oppression, racism, et cetera. And this, this learning has really been important for our team to understand as we look at our audit to ensure that we're systematically looking at the four I's of oppression, to ensure that our programming is addressing each area. So in terms of the audit focus areas for last year, so school year 2020, 2021, and I provided several updates over the year to the committee. Again, we were looking essentially in four focus areas, empowering rigorous content, instructional time and attention, student support and intervention, and courageous conversations. And for each of those focus areas, we were asking very specific questions of ourselves as a school district operationally. So in terms of content, we were looking at, do all students have access to upper level and advanced courses at the secondary level? Instructional time and attention, do all students receive extra time during the day in any subject they need support in? Do they receive out of school opportunities to help meet their needs? Do they have access to an effective RTI process? Do they have access to effective early intervention supports and access to social emotional support? In terms of student support intervention, we were looking at, do all students have access to a rigorous and unbiased special education identification process? And do all students have access to a rigorous and unbiased Section 504 identification process? And finally, through our courageous conversation focus, we were asking ourselves the question of, is the school district through the equity audit focusing on high-impact areas for growth? What else do we need to look at to do to respect and recognize diversity that exists within our student and community populations? And so my goal for this evening is to now present the results of the audit for each of these four focus areas. So that's how the next, the rest of the presentation will flow, is sort of focus area one, what we found, what some of the data is telling us, and then what we're planning for next year. So let's begin with focus area one, empowering and rigorous curriculum. And again, the question here was, do all students have access to upper level and advanced courses at the secondary level? And we, just for sake of clarity, are defining upper level advanced courses as any course offering above standard or college prep level at the secondary level. And so how did we understand, what was the methodology we used to gain an understanding of the answers to these questions? So I will note here that for this question, we did partner with data consultants who actually conducted a multi-year longitudinal analysis across English, math, social studies, and science for grade seven through 12. They reviewed departmental policies and practices for leveling. And again, these are external investigators who really looked at all publicly available information, some internal information, and worked to make sense of it without any preconceived bias coming from district employees. So again, this was completely the work of our consultants. So they, they, they then developed course mapping by subject to understand the flow of kids through the departments. They didn't analyze student data across that course path mapping. So they looked at kids, so if kids enter advanced level in grade seven, is that a predictor of where they end up in grade 12? They analyzed student data and GPA at critical transition and decision access points and compared defined user groups against combined student results. And I'll explain who those groups are in just a minute. In terms of the metrics or the data sources that we use, we look at distributions. We looked at the number of students at each level per grade. We looked at outcomes, so engagement in advanced courses, which was the core question of this area. The progression, so how do students flow from grade to grade by level? And finally, in terms of placement GPA metrics, so outcomes of their placement in a particular level. So the population in the subgroups we looked at were all students. We then looked at students divided by gender, so males versus female. We looked at access by race, by MECO status, and by students with disabilities. And we included here not only students with disabilities with active IEPs and active 504 plans, but students who at some point in their history with us in the district were ever eligible for special education or a 504 plan. So we looked at both active eligible students as well as students who were previously eligible. So before I present the results, I just wanted to give some context, right, into who we are as a district. So this looks at our enrollment and granted, it's from the 2020, 2021 school year. Of our, in our district, about 1.9% of our students identify as African-American, 2.8 identify as Asian, 3.7 Hispanic, .1 Native American, 88.1 white. We have no current enrolled students who are Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, and about 3.4% who identify as multirace but non-Hispanic. In terms of gender, as last year, we had 1,981 students enrolled as males, 1,911 female, and two students who identified as non-binary for a total of 3,894 students enrolled. So here are the highlights from focus area one. The majority of students actually do engage with advanced coursework in at least one subject. The majority of students with 504 plans engage with advanced coursework in at least one subject. The majority of students with a previous IEP engage with, with advanced coursework in at least one subject. And GPA analysis at key transition points in grade six and eight indicated strong consistency around placement practices for all students. So there was no, they didn't find any differences in terms of recommendations. What that last bullet is saying is looking at outcomes coming out of grade six and eight that would lead to recommendations for placement. We found, they found that all students had equal opportunity of, of being placed in upper level courses, regardless of membership in any particular group. In terms of some concerns or areas for focus as we head into the new year is males lagged behind females in engagement with advanced coursework in every single subject. African-American, and again, I just caution here with this statement that is a very small sample size compared to other populations in the district. But our African-American students engaged with advanced coursework in at least one subject significantly lagged behind Asian Pacific Islanders and Caucasian students. Our MECO students, again, engagement with advanced coursework in at least subject, in at least one subjects is also lagged behind students in all other defined groups. Students with, engaged with advanced coursework in both humanities subjects, so that's English and social studies at twice the rate that they engage with advanced coursework in STEM. And students engagement with advanced coursework in mathematics significantly lagged behind other subjects. And what they noted here was there seemed to be very little progression from seventh grade to 11th and 12th grade in math. This gives a visual representation. So again, this chart shows the engagement with advanced coursework in grade 11 or 12 by defined student group. So the first group of data shows you all students, so blue is English, red is social studies, science is yellow, and math is green. And you look at, you can see the data there for all students, females, males, African-American, Asian Pacific Islander, Caucasian, MECO, active IEP, previous IEP, no IEP, 504, and no 504. Just to put that in perspective, so essentially taking this visual graph and translating into a table, these are the percentage rates of engagement in advanced coursework in grades 11 or 12 across the four subject areas by category. So the categories are across the top now and the subjects are in the first column. So of all students, 71% are engaging in English, 76% in social studies, 60% in science, and 38% in math. And you can see the trajectory in grade 11 or 12 advanced coursework by group. I won't go through all of it there. When we look a little closer at engagement with advanced coursework in humanities versus STEM. So in terms of humanities, we're talking about English and social studies, 82% of students access advanced coursework in English. Social studies for both. And actually, 69% access advanced coursework in both English and social studies. In terms of STEM, 66% of our students access advanced coursework in math, science, or both. And 35% access advanced coursework in both math and science. So there's a whole lot more to this data that what's essentially going to happen now that we actually have the data to look at. We're not quite ready to say that is, that we have any issues or concerns. The reality is we have to let our teachers and our department directors and principals begin to work with this data, build, begin to establish time. And so this looks at the action plan around focus area one for this coming school year. So the first will be the establishment of department meeting time to review the data with our secondary faculty. The responsible people here are our secondary principals and directors. The responsible people here are our secondary principals and directors, um, and they'll establish those times as we reopen schools. Um, the, the next activity that we're asking this year of our, uh, departments is a conducted deep analysis of these data trends from the analysis across the four major content areas. So, uh, our data consultants also provided detailed assessment, um, diving deep into each of the four areas of academic study. And those will be provided to our department directors and our principals, our sped administrators and our faculty to work with through department meeting time to begin to understand the data trends. They actually know the students, um, who make up this data. So working with them to determine, uh, what trends might exist and what adjustments might need to be made to ensure better access to more kids. It's certainly a discussion that they'll have throughout the course of the year. We want them then to develop again hypotheses to address the trends identified in number two and develop strategies to address increased access. And then propose adjustments, if any, for the twenty two, twenty three program of studies incorporating those strategies outlined in number three above. Um, and again, that will be the responsibility of our principals and our department directors. But at this stage, um, and I'm just going to come out of stop share for a minute just so I can see everybody. At this stage, the focus really is on, um, now that we have the data, giving the data to our faculty, um, to begin to work with their administrators to better understand what it's saying. To better understand what patterns that might be there and to have them do some reflection to begin to wrestle with how do we open the door for more kids to have access? I think the other thing the equity team is getting into more that we have the data is the question around, um, whether access equals engagement. I think those are two very different questions. So, um, I think one of the questions we may be asking in our courageous conversation series, for example, is you may have the opportunity to engage in advanced coursework, um, but do you? And if not, why, right? So I think there's a, one of the things that came out of the data is discussions, which are really great conversations around, um, is accessing and engaging the same as having the opportunity to engage and is the outcome really everybody getting to advanced courses, right? So there's more conversation to be had with our faculty and our, in our educators, right, around answering some of those questions that when we, we come back to the committee, we're able to sort of provide to you a comprehensive sense of how to move forward in this, uh, in the most equitable way possible. So again, this is just looking at, um, course attainment. So who is currently engaging? Who is accessing those classes? I think one of the other questions we have is, um, relative to access, do other kids feel like they could take it if they wanted to, right? But then choose not to for personal or other reasons. So that's another conversation to come. But again, the outcome of the audit is some really great data to start the conversation this year with our teachers around hypotheses and, uh, what to do with it. So let me go just, I wanted to just come out just so I could, um, sort of see everybody as I made those points. So as we move on to focus area two, instructional time and attention. So again, we're asking questions here about kids' access to the support both during the school day as well as out of school opportunities. We also pulled up questions around RTI, early intervention and social emotional supports. Um, the methodology here was a qualitative review of our ITI programming and structures. Apologies for my typo there, um, in grades K to five examination of participation. So who is engaging in RTI supports as they previously existed? Uh, we looked at the distribution, so the number of students participating in RTI at each grade level in each subject. Uh, examination of opportunities for support across subject grades in schools. We examined and looked at analysis of our achievement gaps that have been well documented, um, in terms of student performance. We examined and analyzed, um, the impact of COVID on academic progress. That was a presentation we gave in the spring that really articulated the impact that the COVID school closures had had on student, student skill development. And for here, we looked at all students. We looked at students by gender, by race, by Metco, by disability status and economic disadvantaged percentages. The results here are telling us that there really was no comprehensive intervention system. We did have, however, to be clear, universal support for reading in all grades and all schools. But support with math and writing became very variable across individual school and grade. So what that means is you might be in second grade at one elementary school and get extra help in math through the, through the use of a tutor, but second grade in another school may not have had math support available for that particular grade level. There was also inconsistencies in data used in decision making. So when teams sit down to talk about whether kids are making progress or not, there were defined tools that we used in reading. Those same defined tools did not exist across other content areas. So again, there's inconsistencies with what one school might be using to determine math support versus another school for math support. We also recognize that achievement gaps have persisted. We also know that there is no consistent out of school time supports provided to students on a consistent basis. And we'll also hear about, uh, feedback from the community that came out in the greatest conversations around, uh, ability to access out of school tutoring and supports and where some families may have the financial means, others can't. And so if, um, we do need to provide support to students out of school time, is that provided universally? Um, and the answer was no, it is not. Um, and I will note here that our middle school title one, um, funding actually established and supported the math interventions that are there. Um, and reading support at the middle school level really had previously targeted specialized reading as opposed to working with the general population of kids enrolled at the middle school. So again, the, the, where the middle school got their math, uh, intervention program really came through title one funding and not through the general fund. Um, so just a, a quick aside about achievement gap. So what is an achievement gap? It is a persistent disparity in academic performance among students groups and subgroups. In Hingham Public Schools, we really have three areas of subgroup. We have all students, which are the combined performance of all kids in a particular grade level. We have our high need students, which is an unduplicated count of, um, all students in a school or district belonging to at least one of the following individual subgroups. So kids with disabilities, English language learners, former ELLs or economically disadvantaged. And finally, we had, um, a subgroup of students with disabilities, but which is a count of all students in a school or district with a disability as defined under IDEA and who have, uh, who have an active IEP. So, um, the committee will remember some of these next slides. This just shows our twenty sixteen, uh, achievement gaps, uh, between, and again, the, the light blue line at the top is all students. The orange line is our high needs population and the darker blue line represents our students with disabilities. And you can see that difference in achievement is what we refer to as the achievement gap. And the bottom of the graph shows you progression across the grades and starting in grade three ELA in math, all the way up to grade ten ELA math and science, technology, engineering. Um, and I, I won't spend a ton of time here because we covered it before, but I also just want to highlight for the, for the committee and for the public that these gaps have persisted. So this is twenty sixteen. This is twenty seventeen. And this is twenty eighteen. And I'm sorry, twenty nineteen. So, um, what I will say here, um, is in terms of what are we going to do relative to academic supports for students is we are establishing, uh, new specialist interventionist roles as a part of the Hingham tiered system of support academic rollout. And the first activity really happened last spring when the committee, uh, through the budget process, uh, and through the, the, um, approval of our budget at town meeting, actually secured funding to establish all of these new specialist and interventionist roles for the district. Coming fall, we will be, we will begin to communicate to our faculty, staff and community, the new HDSS academic model. And we will be developing a consistent and uniform data systems to monitor student progress and identify areas for support. We will be conducting both academic and social emotional learning screenings and form intervention groups to then address those area of weakness. We will review student skill data and make needed adjustments, if any, to the academic model. And the, here's the most exciting part is we will be targeting all of our title one funds to provide universal out of school time support to students requiring intervention in grades K through eight. So that will be delivered either through before or after school, um, support based on student eligibility through the screening process, uh, to receive, um, uh, no cost to the families in, in, uh, of a school time support of the academic area they need support in, um, regardless of, uh, private ability to pay. So we will be looking at inviting students into intervention groups, um, in the district, working with our, our, our tutors and our interventionists, um, that will specifically target academic skills, uh, for students in grades K through eight. And this just gives a visual representation of the HDSS structure. Again, we do have a social emotional, uh, uh, program in place. Uh, we will be looking at a, a, a full year to launch, uh, in screening K to twelve. And we're particularly focused on the social emotional well-being of our students returning to school, uh, post, um, COVID and post, um, school shutdown and last year, uh, with the challenges it presented relative to mental health and wellness. Uh, and again, the idea is core instruction at tier one will catch eighty percent of our students. Tier two will require target interventions in small groups. And tier three will include intensive individual interventions, um, for students who require that level of support, all funded within the public school, sort of, uh, budget and sort of not reliant on any federal funds. It will be something we'll be able to provide to all of our students consistently. And again, the idea here is to begin to address those areas in our audit where the questions were no. So no, they, all, not, all students do not receive access to, um, in school, in support in the area, academic area in which they need support. And so this will go a long way, launching our HDSS model, uh, to begin to, um, address those questions that we weren't able to answer in the affirmative. And this is the staffing we're bringing on. Again, reading specialists across all four schools, actually all five schools. Literacy specialists, writing specialists, uh, math specialists, interventionists and math paraeducators particularly across our four elementary schools. In terms of focus areas three, student support intervention, the two questions we asked here were, do all students have access to a rigorous and unbiased special education identification process? And do all students have access to a rigorous and unbiased section five oh four identification process? What we looked at here was examination of the, of the DESI data. So we received reports, uh, from the state on eligibility in special education by subgroup. And we also examined five oh four eligibility rates by student subgroup. The district, the, the, the metrics and data sources here were relative to the, at, uh, the DESI Edwin Report, which is the analytic software for the state. Uh, the equity reports that were provided to us, um, back in twenty nineteen. Aspen data, so enrollment data, we consulted with our school psychologists who actually conduct, uh, most of the cognitive assessment of students in the district. And we also looked at examination of eligibility rates. And here, the populations we looked at were all students, uh, by race, uh, economic disadvantaged and ELL. Now, what we noticed here is that, um, the highlights in the data is black males still are three times more likely than all other peers to be found eligible under IDEA in the area of specific learning disability. I will note that in the twenty eighteen nineteen school year, that number was, uh, that risk ratio, which I'll explain in just a minute, was actually a four, uh, and this she, uh, last year, for last year's data, sorry, because this year's data is not yet. Uh, we did go to three times more likely. The other thing that came up, um, in the highlight here is in qualitative review, uh, revealed the need to address known bias that exists within tools that we use to evaluate eligibility. So things like the WISK, the Wyatt, the Woodcock Johnson, what I'll note here is, um, we have learned over time since really the inception of cognitive assessment in the United States that tests, um, have within them, um, known bias and that certain with particular groups of kids perform differently on different parts of these tests. And really what came out of this qualitative review was that if our faculty was evaluating, um, for example, a black student, um, we weren't accounting for known bias that exists within those tools so they control for that bias to be sure that we were, um, making appropriate, um, eligibility determinations for a particular student based on data that could have been skewed based on, um, known bias that exists within the tool. So I will say, uh, when we uncovered this, the director of student services and I worked with the psychologists to identify tools, uh, to address this concern. The other highlight that came out of this area was really the connection between tools used for IDA eligibility as well as those used to identify some impairments under section five oh four were the same. So we feel like our work to increase the assessment skill of our special educators will also go a long way to support the assessment skill of our, um, of our assessment teams in five oh four as well as our secondary counseling staff who work very closely with five oh four eligibility process. Um, and I will also note here that DESI is working with the district right now to address areas of disproportionality. And actually, uh, Dr. Venice, um, had to reassign a, a percentage of her federal IDA funds to address the disproportionality that was found through the state reporting. So let me explain a little bit more here. We'll start with special education. So we, we have seen an increase in the students who are being evaluated under special education, under IDEA provisions in the district. Why this is important here is because at the volume of initial eligibility, uh, the volume of initial evaluations, we'd really thoughtful that the students that we're evaluating, we're evaluating with the appropriate tools, again, to ensure that known bias is controlled for when making those decisions. Um, I'll also note here over time, um, again, th- this looks at the initials, uh, eligible and percent found not eligible of the kids being found eligible. We're really wanting to be thoughtful that we are again, using the right tools and the right way to make, uh, these determinations. The other thing I'll explain a little bit about, I won't get too much into this, um, just because it explains the next slide. What happens is the state conducts and, uh, sorry, uh, calculates rather, risk ratios for the district. So what we, what they, what they do is they look at the number of students in a particular racial ethnic group, um, in the LEA, uh, divided by the number of students in the group enrolled in the district. So, um, what they looked at is, for example, what are the number of kids in this category who are identified as having a specific learning disability? And what's the percentage of those kids in the general population? And that calculates for us what's referred to as a risk ratio. So essentially, um, risk ratios or alternative risk ratios greater than or equal to three are highlighted in yellow, which we'll see in a minute. And the, uh, ratios greater than four are in red. And we read the risk ratios by translating that risk ratio into a statement. So, um, for example, I'll show the actual data. So when we look at for school year nineteen twenty, that first yellow block you see in the left for African American, black, what we would say is black students are three point two times more likely, uh, than their, and then their peers to be identified as having a specific learning disability. So back in twenty seventeen, eighteen, um, the risk ratio there was three point nine two. During the school year eighteen nineteen, that risk ratio is four point two seven, which is where we got the narrative, the sort of the qualitative statement of four times more likely. And now for nineteen twenty, for last year, that has come down to be about three point two two. What I will caution everyone here though, is we're dealing with very small numbers, right? So, uh, the total number of students with a specific learning disability who are black or African American is only nine. Last year it was ten, uh, but the in total enrolled students grew nineteen twenty over eighteen nineteen, which is why you see a different risk, risk ratio calculated. Uh, but this is actually a snapshot of the actual equity report from the state, um, showing you sort of where those risk ratios come in and how they're calculated. So the focus area, uh, action planning here is really around the purchase of two, uh, set tools and assessments to ensure known biases control. Uh, we then will be distributing those tools to all of our service providers. Uh, Dr. Venice is currently partnering with, uh, uh, Boston University to provide professional development to all students, uh, all student services staff rather, on assessment skills to design specifically to control for known bias. And we're also ensuring, uh, through focus area three, the implementation of HDSS, uh, to ensure consistent data is then used to make judgments and ascertain actual academic progress to inform, better inform eligibility determinations. Um, I will note here that number three is of critical importance. What we recognized through those conversations with our staff was while everybody had received exposure or training during graduate school training, it had been a while since we had really engaged with them on how to be better assessors and actually look for these known biases when they're assessing kids. So that will be coming through the professional development program during the course of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year that's coming up. And, uh, focus area four, which our courageous conversation series. Uh, this is where we ask the question, is the school district through the audit focusing on high pack to impact areas for growth? What else do we need to do to respect and recognize diversity and, um, of our students and our, and of our community? What I will note here is we use a thematic analysis, uh, based on feedback that metric and data sources were focus groups, um, designed to be affinity grouping. designed to be affinity grouping. So we invited sort of people who identified together in a particular way to come together to talk to us. The population of the subgroups here were of students, faculty and community members. And we looked at students who were BIPOC or Black Indigenous People of Color, students eligible under MECA were enrolled with us through MECO members of our community who identified as LGBTQ plus, people with disabilities, English language learners, linguistically diverse, religious belief, socioeconomic status and gender. And the big takeaway here was the feedback from the people in the community really focused on the differences between inclusion versus belonging. A lot of the groups consistently said to us, you know, we feel like we're included, right? But we don't necessarily feel like we belong. And so the need began to emerge through the courageous conversations to the need to develop a strong sense of belonging among every member of our community. And that's really key to us. Belonging also plays a huge role in kids' social emotional wellness and their ability to develop and sustain and really develop and enrich friendships and and work partnerships with peers in school. The only way they belong was was critical. There also came out of the feedback, this perception that when students, when issues relative to bias or discrimination or harassment, for example, arise that they're not dealt with by the school district. Or the phrase that was used quite a bit was sort of swept under the rug. That then began us thinking about how do we address those issues? What is the current practice? And we also identified a need for a systemic way to address incidence of bias within our schools. The perception that we weren't dealing with it was concerning. When going back and talking to our teams, one of the things we realized was we hadn't done a lot of training to support our administrators and our staff really on how to address these issues. And that really led to the need for professional development for our faculty, staff and administrators. And really the need to develop, excuse me, stronger relationships with community partners and community organizations. Nine times out of ten, they have a lot of resources and support and we have a big need for support. So the idea here is if we can build stronger relationships with our community based organizations, then we have a more enriching opportunity to actually utilize those resources that those organizations can provide and support us with. The, let me sort of step back for a minute. That was really striking data to our equity team in the district to hear that people really feel like they don't belong. It was frankly upsetting and incredibly concerning. And so what we identified at the outset was we really needed to begin to think about where, where is the foundation of belonging, right? Where does that live in the organization? And how do we use those foundations of belonging as a framework for really addressing bias in schools? And so we met with our principals last week for our planning meeting. And from that meeting, we're really going to be using a restorative practice approach to begin to develop a sense of belonging across all schools at all levels. Each school will be establishing their own building based equity and inclusion team. The role of those teams will be to manage site specific issues and rollout. And each of those teams will then have a rep that sits with us on the district wide team to keep us abreast of individual school progress. We have completed for all building administrators in the district, training on level one of restorative practices. And we'll begin piloting restorative practices and restorative circles during this upcoming academic year through our partnership with Suffolk University Center Restorative Justice. We'll also be utilizing restorative circles to be used with faculty and school communities to begin to develop consensus and common understandings of belonging across all six of our schools. We're using restorative practices as the theoretical foundation to now deal with issues of bias within our community. And we will be working throughout this year, probably by winter, to begin to identify and train school based early adopters who want to begin to pilot and implement in their classes. And so if I could explain for just a minute, the connection between, you know, this framework to address bias coupled with what is restorative justice? I just want to explain a little bit because it may better illuminate for people why we chose to go in this direction. The restorative practices really focuses on addressing and discussing the needs of the school community in an open, honest and straightforward environment. The focus here is on building relationships between students and educators. We want to use this as a way to reduce, prevent and improve harmful behavior. And most equally as important to repair harm and restore positive relationships. And we really feel that in terms of resolving conflict and holding individuals and groups accountable for their behavior, which is also a core tenet of restorative practice, will really go a long way in really evolving our discipline policy and our discipline code to not necessarily have the first, you know, response to something removal from the school community, right? Because what we do know is belonging in community is actually our number one. It's one of the major areas that we know that we can prevent recidivism, right? So that we don't have recurrent recurring instances of bias in the schools. It's really by helping people understand the way that their behavior impacted their relationship with other people in the community. And the core of all of this is really establishing that sense of belonging and community. And then using that sense of community to now work with students and faculty and people in the community that interface with us to sort of take a different approach of how we're going to work with students and develop an understanding of how their words or their actions or their behavior really impacted their relationship with peers and other adults and vice versa. And that's where we feel like if we take the approach of right and wrong, there's always going to be sort of a sort of a dichotomy that doesn't exist. The reality is we're still members of the same community. And if somebody's behavior has wronged you, then it's incumbent upon them as a member of the community to right that wrong and to fix that, which is the core of restorative practices, which is where we feel like this is the theoretical model to begin to tackle these issues in a more focused way. I will also note that we're also looking at a lot of professional development. So we have partnered with the Ideas Organization, which stands for Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement for Students. And we will be running two onsite grad, actually three onsite graduate courses over the course of next year. We'll be offering two sections, so a fall and a winter course for the core course called Ideas One, which is anti racist school practices to support success of all students. That will run twice because we do anticipate a high level interest among our teachers. This is designed to introduce teachers to the complex issues raised by race and racism and their impact on student learning and achievement. The course will then encourage educators to recognize the link between self awareness and professional development as a component of providing equity to all students. And our teachers will have the opportunity to earn two graduate credits for completion of the course provided through Framingham, Framingham State. We'll also be running a sort of a one credit course or a twelve point five hour course for our administrators on really designed to help our building administrators understand the inner workings of cultural proficiency, including the impact of racial microaggressions and stereotypes on learning, student engagement in school culture. They'll then learn strategies on how to apply these elements to supporting culturally proficient classrooms in school environments, as well as applying course learning to schools at the institutional level. And because their courses are structured a little different, they'll have the ability to earn one credit from Framingham State. So those are graduate courses that we'll be running as a part of our PD program. I also want to talk a little bit about the workshops that we'll be running. So as people may know, the district runs release day workshops in November, January and March. And we'll be running a series of sessions partnering with ideas such as introduction to ideas, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. Anti racism and indigenous perspective, become a cult, becoming a culturally responsive teacher, bootcamp for white people, strategies in action, examining image and impact of difficult literature, race, racism in the arts, the N word and teaching about Native Americans. And so all of these workshops are being run with expertly trained presenters through ideas who will engage our teachers in deeper learning around equity and inclusion. Again, as a way to expand everybody's understanding of the role we play in supporting equity of access for all of our students. The introduction to ideas class, I will also note will run, will also be running a section for our school committee as well as our community leaders. So we'll be reaching out, I'll be reaching out over the next couple of weeks to various groups in the community such as the Civic Association, the Hingham Education Foundation, our PTOs, the Immunity Council, the Pride Project, the Hingham Sports Partnership to sort of see if any of the people or in the organizations want to send a representative or two to actually engage with the committee on this training. So that as community based leaders, you also have a deeper understanding of the work that's going on in our schools to ensure equity and access for all of our students. So more to come on that, I'll be working with Ness and the through Ness with the committee to find dates for training. And then once we have those firmed up, we'll then reach out to our community partners in the next couple of weeks to arrange an opportunity for them to participate as well. And that's really going to be complimentary training to what's happening in the building with our teachers. So let's talk a little bit about next steps. So the Equity and Inclusion Working Group will continue our work into year two. So year two audit, year one rollout of activities. We'll be looking at the implementation of all the year one activities and data analysis associated with that. We'll be doing a lot of support to our building based teams with both time and resources needed for the implementation of action planning across all four areas of focus for twenty one, twenty two. We will continue with the Rides Equity Improvement Cycle in that partnership with Harvard and Dr. Ramona Jackson. We will continue our courageous conversation series with affinity groups across the district. We will be identifying survey tools to begin to measure school culture and climate. And I'll be looking at both students, faculty and staff, families and the community. And we'll be coordinating with human resource to begin to develop strategies to recruit and retain a diverse workforce. I also have for the committee preliminary set of questions that will be, sorry, that should say twenty one, twenty two. Apologies to the typo on the top of the slide. But as we head into this year, remember that our equity improvement cycle is not done. And we're about to start a new cycle with these questions. So we'll be looking at again empowering and rigorous content to, do all students have access to consistently rigorous curricula and instructional materials? Do all students have access to and complete the mass core? In terms of school culture and climate, this is where our surveys will come in really handy. Do all students feel connected and engaged in their school community? Do all students feel safe in their schools? And do all students have access to a rigorous and unbiased school discipline process? We'll also be looking at family engagement. So do all families feel welcome and included in the school environment? And do all families partner with their students' schools to meet the students' learning goals? And in terms of teaching quality and diversity, which goes back to my last bullet about partnering with HR to develop strategies to recruit and retain educators of color, we'll be asking ourselves the question, do all students have access to educators of the same racial background? Now, in terms of, I'll sort of come out of the chair screen just so I could see you all. What I will note here is that relative to one of the points, let me just find it again. I don't remember the point I was going to make, so it can't be, it couldn't have been too important. It was context around something and I can't remember. But so that's to say, so what, just so everybody understands, what we're heading into next year is actually implementing and rolling out year one while we simultaneously begin collecting data for year two, right? So this year is really going to be the same thing will play out. We can come back in our equity updates and provide you status updates of where we are with all those initiatives ongoing for year one rollout and then give you sort of snapshots of where we are relative to data collection for year two, this year's audit questions. And so with that, I will stop talking and come up for air. So I really appreciate your time and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you so much for putting that together and for all of your work on it. I think it's, it's really exciting. We've been talking about this for years now and the achievement gaps. And I feel like it's been a lot of, you know, collecting data, laying the groundwork and we can really start digging in this year. So that's very exciting. So thank you to you and the team for doing that. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments? Tim? You read it.
I think I'd be better at this a year and a half into it. Looking at the number of students, students on who have current IEPs and the access to upper level classes, that's been kind of a refrain that I've been hearing for years and years from people. I know we've talked about it before. And that was, I think, three, I might probably have the numbers wrong, I didn't write them down fast enough. But the seventy five percent of typically of Hingham students are involved in at least one upper level class, but only sixteen percent of kids on an IEP are. That seemed pretty, a pretty troubling statistic to me. Looking, looking at the different groups, I know I've been kind of a squeaky wheel of trying to get special ed kids really embedded into the equity work.
They've been there all along. I just, I promise they've been there all along. The students with disabilities have been a part of our equity conversation since inception. And actually, that group served as the foundations for launching the bigger initiative. So, so I think, Tim, what we need to do this year, right, is now that we have the data, allow the room for our educators and administrators to work with that data and identify what the trends may be that are sort of having that be the case. And I think that while the number is low, we also want to be thoughtful of people with disabilities as a broader group than active IEPs. That was one of the things that we, that came up in our discussions with our school based teams is we do have students who are younger, in their younger years through elementary, middle school, who may be eligible for under IDEA, have active IEPs, but then who actually make sufficient progress to actually no longer be eligible under IDEA. So we also track those students, so the students, so when you actually look at combined performance of kids with disabilities as a broader concept over I, over IEP eligible, we saw a greater percentage. Now, I don't disagree, right, that that number is low compared to other groups. There's also a lot of variation by department too, right? So the overall number is one thing, but then it varies by subject area. But you're absolutely right, the kids with disabilities, and I appreciate your advocacy there. They have been an area of focus for us for years. And now that we actually have the data collected, we're going to be turning it over to our, our school based teams to help us make sense of it and develop strategies to address those gaps and begin to sort of strategize how to work through that. I didn't mean to drop, I just wanted to be really clear for everybody that kids with disabilities have always been a part of this conversation and actually served as the genesis for the discussion.
But not in any of the professional development this year.
I'm sorry?
There's no, you look, it was a pretty active slate of professional development and there was, I didn't see any.
I'll defer to Dr. Venice, but there's quite a bit of professional development under special education. So Suzanne, do you want to jump in here?
The development under Dr. Venice would be how to teach kids with special ed with neurodiversity. And I'm looking more of how sort of you're, where you are about how to make them full a part of the school community, which is something that we've been hearing from the sped community for a long time.
I'm sorry, so.
More under the equity work about being a part of the school culture and the school community and fully accepted into the school as a person with neurodiversity as opposed to teaching the staff how to effectively teach them, which I think would be more under Dr. Venice.
If I could, Tim, one of the efforts that we're making is really to relaunch the inclusion facilitators who haven't been able to be launched because COVID really prevented their roles from coming to fruition. So we're going to be really reintroducing their role to the rest of the faculty as we open up schools. And then in addition, as Jamie alluded to, a partnership that I am beginning to create with Boston University to work on, as you really expanding our psychologists and teachers' ability to account for bias in their evaluation process, which will really illuminate a lot more of student strengths than just the challenges that are coming up in, in more outdated assessments. And those have already been purchased, so we're, we're ready to launch those. And.
They'll also be working, to interrupt, but to Tim's point, I think more directly, they're also going to be working with our implementation of HTSS. So it's not about, I'm going to push back a little bit. It's not about giving the faculty a session on how to teach kids. I believe that they actually teach kids quite well. What I think, what we need to, what where we need growth and development with our faculty in terms of their skillset is to better understand the connection between assessment data that occurs within special education. occurs within special education that really uncovers a learning profile and then how that translates to their instruction. So it's, it's more, Suzanne's point, it's about the facility, the inclusion facilitators actually becoming a full member of our academic community, working with the regular, the general education staff on where to make accommodate and then coaching and supporting them in real time versus a session on three afternoons. The other piece that's critical there, too, is their support, and I think I mentioned it throughout the, the presentation, is the true actualization of our multi-tiered model, right? So the reality here is as we bring into effect a true HTSS model in reading, writing, general literacy skills across all content areas and math, so too comes the support of our BU partnership, for example, to then help our teachers work with that data to then adjust and change classroom-based instruction, right? And that's the connection between that assessment data and learning in the classroom. That's where we want to see, that, that, that model has a lot of impact. So to your earlier point, you're right, there is no session being run that says how to teach kids with disabilities, because I don't know that our teachers actually need that. I think what they need is to better refine existing skill. And actually, part of our model is providing option. So all you saw on the slide were only the sessions through the Ideas partnership and not all of the sessions we're running in the district, which I can tell you, there'll be a whole lot more there in terms of pedagogy and instruction that aren't a part of Ideas. Those were just the Ideas classes. But thank you for bringing that up, because I just, that gives me an opportunity to clarify that, that, that wasn't the only sessions we're running. Those are just the sessions through the partnership with Ideas.
So.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up on that? So the sessions through Ideas, are those limited to race or are they, does that also include working with other, these other marginalized groups?
So what we, so the, in consultation with Ideas, they, they worked with me to identify the first round of classes to run. So there are other sessions that are higher level that, and really to, really what they wanted was everyone to take Ideas one as a workshop. And I said, but I've got 800 faculty and staff who are all in very different places. So we talked through what made the most sense for year one. There are some sessions specifically for kids with disabilities and relative to access to general ed, but talking through with the Ideas consultant, this is where she's saying we should start and then layer in other pieces, particularly where we're about to launch the HTSS initiative and our inclusion facilitators getting back online. So what came out of it really for everybody, I want to be really clear, regardless of group, right, that the belonging was universal. So the real core work that's happening across all six schools and the principals were sort of part of that conversation last week, is on the development and establishing belonging for everybody. And they're going to start that work at the building level. And, but so it's not that we will never offer those sessions, it's just that when we consulted with the experts in the field, they suggested where to begin.
Thank you. Carlos?
Well, Jamie, I appreciate your presentation. You know, I mean, speaks for itself, great work there. We've been waiting for this for quite a while. As we are waiting for this presentation for quite a while, one of the things that I keep repeating every time we talk about diversity and inclusion is the fact that we don't have a mandatory diversity and inclusion training for our staff. And I'm not talking about just teachers. This has to be for our staffs at the schools, you know, making sure, making sure that that happens, you know, as new employee comes in. Obviously, I'm not sure what we will take. I think this is the appropriate time to address, because you had mentioned that once you presented, that perhaps you would address that. And I don't see that as part of the training. I would respectfully ask that that is incorporated as part of PD, right, you know, as, as we are discussing this. But then also, because I'm not only talking about having this training for teachers, right? I think, I believe it's, is appropriate to have across the schools. One of the needs that you'd identify here on this is for a systematic way to address incident of buyers within our schools. My question to you is, as you did this together, did you look at also involving the staff at our sports, athletics? Because I tell you, from observation experience, that, you know, there's students of colors that may make a team, so they have that sense of being included. But guess what? When it times to play in playtime, they are not given the opportunity. And so they may feel that they don't belong there. And it's not because of the quality of their play, it's explicitly, explicitly has to do with bias. So my question to you is, did you have an opportunity to look at that? And, and obviously, if you could address of when is the appropriate time to address, to, to include diversity and inclusion training for our staff, that would be greatly appreciated, because I'm looking for that moment.
So to answer the first question, that's a part of our new teacher orientation sessions and not necessarily professional development. We have a year-long program where we train all of our new educators on an induction program where they meet throughout the year. So we're working to get some sessions in the spring to ensure, to your earlier comment, it wasn't highlighted there, because again, it wasn't a part, I want to be really clear with everybody, what you saw tonight was not every PD offering we run in the district. It was only, only those through the Ideas partnership with that organization from MASSS. So the, through the new teacher training, we're looking at the training for equity and diversity and justice in partnership with Ideas. So they're working out, their sessions are six hours long, and we're working with them on a condensed training for new teachers to be a part of our new teacher induction program. But that hasn't been finalized yet, because we're just establishing the partnership. And actually, she just sent me the dates for the graduate courses as we were meeting. So that is still in development. In terms of athletics, there's actually going to be an entire question. So let me start at the beginning. As a, a, a part of our organization, the athletic department is fully under all of these initiatives and will be expected to do similar work relative to restorative practices or sort of justice and training with all faculty and staff, including our coaches. So what hasn't happened yet, because it's been the summer and we've been getting ready for launch, is the partnership with, with, with Director Quattramony to really figure out how we do that in partnership with Ideas, something that we do internally, but they will be a part of the training and support that all of our staff get. But coming up as a specific area of the audit is on accessing and belonging in extracurricular and athletic activities. So we're actually going to be looking more specifically at, not only at athletics, but also at after club sports, after club, intermurals, school-based clubs and activities and making sure that there's equitable access to all parts of our system. So I, I did take your feedback well, I, it is going to be incorporated as a part of new teacher training, just to be clear, it wasn't highlighted here, because it has been finalized just yet. We'd likely get into that with one of our updates throughout the year to let the committee know sort of where we are in progress. And I do hear you about the athletic piece. We did hear a lot of feedback during our Courageous Conversation Series. What we're going to be doing in the fall is launching a courageous converse, a series of courageous conversations with our, with our sort of kids in various activity groups to begin to inform that question on extracurriculars. We just haven't launched that just yet.
That's awesome. Just a follow-up, just, you know, obviously, a new teacher are more, have been more exposed to diversity. But you know, as I say, I don't want to be biased, obviously. This is, we're talking about being unbiased. So I'm not just talking about teachers. Staff across the board that has been with us for over 10 years, perhaps never saw a diversity training. So if you could kindly, I know that we're talking about one area that you audited, but if you, you know, if there is a way for you to please work with HR, you know, to make sure that we have a program moving forward where every single staff is trained. Because I mean, as a state worker, we have to go through those trainings. It's mandatory. So I'm just trying to sort of like, you know, bring to hang a, a training that is needed, because a lot of people quite, don't, don't quite practice diversity in town. So in order for us to really correct the past, we need to address these trainings moving forward, is not just for the new teachers or for the new staff coming in. You know, I am very concerned about the, the individuals that have been here for quite a while. So if there's a way for us to implement that, I would appreciate that. I know that may not have, may not have to do with this, but it's something we've been talking about for quite a while, as you're developing this inclusion, you know, program. My thought that eventually we'll address it, so I would appreciate if that can be, you know, finally incorporated. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Michelle?
Thank you. Super specific question, Dr. Jamie, but on the before and after school supports, amazing and so glad we're going to be offering them. I'm wondering, any chance we'll be able to provide transportation for those? Or would transportation be a parent responsibility? Or have you thought about providing transportation?
No, our goal is to be able to transport the kids. There's, there's late buses that do run, and the issue really is for elementary to establish. So we'll work through Patrick and sort of see what we can do to, we're not targeting the launch of the before and after school stuff until at least October. September is really going to be, everybody back, we're staying out of the way, let's develop the first six weeks of school, let's establish classroom culture, let's get the kids back and acclimated. And then by, I allow the screenings to occur. That was the conversation with the principals. September needs to be back to business and finding out where kids are academically. When we get into October, then we'll begin sort of, so we have a little bit of time, to your point, Michelle, to begin to work out those logistics to ensure we have a high rate of participation. That's our hope, our goal.
That's great. Does anyone else have anything? No, I just want to say the focus on belonging, I think that's huge. That's something that, looking through your presentation, really jumped out. And we want every kid to not just, you know, be included, but to feel like they're part of the community. So that's a, it's a great goal right there. So.
Sorry, I, I would agree. I'll throw in my editorial comment that I was, it's not going to make, but I agree with you. And I think also, a little bit to Carlos's point, too, I think it's important from a staff perspective, too, right? That, you know, if particularly as we bring on more diverse candidates, right, we need to make sure that they feel like they belong here, right? So that they'll, to Jamie's point, you can't just, kids hired, you have to retain them. And I think that is going to be really important work that we undertake. So I'm glad, it's sad that it came out through the work, but I'm so grateful that the work happened so that you could identify that that was one of the issues.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, does anyone else in the public have any comments or questions on this? Use the raised hand. Rena Patel?
Rena Patel, 22, Andrew Isle. I'm just, you know, really appreciate the thorough presentation. I think there's a lot of great things coming up this year. I'm just wondering if there's going to be, if and when there will be a particular focus on kind of reviewing teaching materials to create a, like a diverse perspective rather than a one lens view? Because, you know, some of the things that the kids are being given are, you know, have a fair amount of bias in them. So just wondering kind of where you guys are with that and when that's going to happen.
Okay, thanks.
It's part of our audit investigation for this coming year.
Thank you. Lynn Vanderhoven?
Hi, Jamie. Thank you so much. I know I've been on the calls representing the Unity Council and challenging you on when we were going to stop gathering data and start moving forward. And I couldn't be happier with all of the action plans that you all have put in place for this coming year, even while we're still battling the pandemic. So I so appreciate the work and I even more appreciate the actionable items. Two questions did come up. One of them was around transparency when we do have issues at the school. Transparency to the parents, transparency to the community, so that when an issue arises, the parents have the opportunity to address something with their children in their own way and make sure that it is addressed. Sometimes, especially boys, how was school, it was great, right? And then three weeks later on Facebook, you know, as a parent, you're finding out that something happened. So I, I think that that's important, that there's some transparency to the parents so that we can address any sort of incident that happens within the schools. And just to build on that, that we embrace the community as wholeheartedly as we can in the trainings, so that the messaging is coming out of the home as strongly as it's coming out of the school, so that we can all be aligned on our goals around equity and inclusion. So just two thoughts, but again, really, I just wanted to say thank you.
I really appreciate that, Lynn. That's high praise coming from you, who really has been a really great thought partner through the year as we got this work done. What I, what I want to pick up on in your comment, though, is transparency implies a lack of trust, right? And so we have to, to suggest that there's a lack of, what, what, what I, what we're really thoughtful of is as we begin this work, we have to be really consciously building trust between the school district and our community. So that, and that's going to be this year with our buildings, is really going to be community building. Like what do we believe wholeheartedly makes us a community? What makes us special? Let's first begin to identify those things that we agree on. As we advance our restorative practice and restorative justice work, critical to this initiative taking hold is the establishment of reciprocal trust between the community and the school district. So you're absolutely right. So that's not meant to be a criticism, it's actually meant to be a highlight that you're right on, because we recognize that that same thing must also be there. The other, the other piece is as we begin to address issues, systematically address issues of bias, using the restorative circle, the restorative practices approach, it actually opens the door for us to have more open dialogue. If we solely rely on it from a disciplinary perspective, then we are then bound by certain rights and protections relative to student information and student data, rather than taking a community-based approach that this issue happened within our school environment, within our school community, that really impacted other people. And it's incumbent upon us to support people making amends, to sort of fix that, fix that trust that was broken, fix that, 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 those sort of hurt feelings or those perceptions of disrespect. So you're absolutely right, we're going to work this year, again, year one of our rollout to really begin to address this more systematically, is school-based piloting. So as each individual school, we're working with our principals to develop strategies around how to hold these circles, how to have these conversations with our community. We're going to be reaching out separately to members of our clergy, members of community-based organizations, our other town departments, so that when we get to the point of actually going full steam into restorative practice, that everybody in the entire community is on the same page about how we can best address these issues. It's not best addressed through, through division and through blame and through shame, it's best addressed by coming together as a community and holding other community members responsible for the impact that their words, actions or behavior had on the whole. And, and that's going to require, I had a, a really great consultation conversation about a week ago with a local president of a college, who, and, and we sort of talked back and forth around the administrative side of rollout. And one of the big pieces of feedback that I took from him, who's done this work at the, at the college level, is until you have community support and buy-in, until everybody's on the same page, you cannot be doing this in isolation, right? How do you bring a, a, an individualistic group into understanding the collective whole? And that's really the cultural work that has to get done over the next few years. So Lynn, you're right on, that's a long-winded way of saying we agree, we recognize it as well. And the way we're approaching it really is through our building-based development of senses of belonging, senses of community, and using those circles in the building to then bring other people in to sort of make our, our circle bigger, as it were, so that more people are involved in that process. But you're right, we, we cannot tackle this stuff in isolation. And sometimes it can feel like we are, like that we're sort of, you know, the, the call for information and need from the community can sometimes outweigh our ability to prepare that information and get it out. But this year, we're having a big focus on communication in an attempt to begin to establish those lines of trust, so that when issues do arise, there's a level of trust from the community on both sides of the issue, that sort of we have the student's best interests at heart and we're trying our best to work through. best interests at heart. And we're trying our best to work through repairing the harm that was done to the community.
Great. Thank you. And yeah, thank you again for, for putting this together. It was a lot of work and, but it's, it's exciting. We're going, it's, we're on a good path, I think. So next is 6.3, hear an update on the athletic program. And I think that's Dr. Struzio and Coach Q.
Let me share my screen. My screen. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee and Dr. Mestes, for the opportunity to present our final report of the Athletic Department self-study. I am Jim Quachman. I'm the Director of Athletics at Hingham High School. Dr. Strus? Doctor, if you've started, you're on mute.
There seems to be an issue with his audio.
I just am finding that.
Yeah, his, doesn't look like he's muted, but.
Are you on the laptop, doctor? Do you have that with you? And wouldn't it figure that he starts with the first couple of slides? My apologies?
No, I was, I was actually just going to say, Carrie, don't usually do this, but take the pressure off of Dr. Struziero. Would you, would you want to do a two-minute break? To get Dr. Struziero up to date and people can stretch their legs really quick?
Yes. We'll stay, we'll stay in session, but, but yeah, let's, we'll take a break and.
Thank you, Michelle.
Just let us know when you're ready.
I see a thumbs up.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, just sign out of that other one. Get rid of that echo.
Yeah, we're good?
Good.
We are good, and we will begin when, when Carrie, you say that's okay?
Okay, we're good to go.
All right. I am Jim Quachman, Director of Athletics at Hingham High School. And a smooth transition over to Dr. Strus.
Dr. Struziero, administrative intern. So thank you very much for having us tonight. It has been a great internship. I've learned a lot about the nuts and bolts of how to be an administrator, but to be a part of the transformative work of sustainable improvement for the, the entire school has been really inspiring. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of this project. And I'd also like to thank Mary Ellen Holler, who I know is on the call tonight. We couldn't have done this without her. For example, today, when we rehearsed the entire presentation, she was doing a million other things, but was able to give us feedback. And she's been supportive of us like that the whole way. So our research goals were to, so thank you, Mary Ellen. Our research goals were to explore the nature of student-athletes' experiences at Hingham High School, and to learn what stakeholders can do to help enrich those experiences. So our research questions were to describe, we asked parents, coaches, and student-athletes in focus groups to describe the most meaningful experiences that student-athletes or their children had had and why they were so meaningful, to describe challenges that the student-athletes or their children had faced, and what, if anything, the children or student-athletes learned from those challenges. And then we asked, how can we enrich the experiences of student-athletes at Hingham High School? So those are the three major research questions. In the methodology, we talked about this with you guys in March. It's grounded theory, very similar to the courageous conversations methodology that Jamie was talking about in Focus Area Number Four, that research is an iterative process, that the knowledge gained from it is contextual, and that inductive reasoning can, can lead to the building of theory, that you don't have to have a theory and then test it all the time. Sometimes you can go searching for the theory and it will emerge from the data. So especially with, with new research and research that's highly sensitive to context, like what's going on in an athletics department during a pandemic, grounded theory is a really great fit to get the job done. So that's why we chose it. We started with initial coding, which was simply summarizing and placing information into categories and counting what was in that. And then we moved to a second level of analysis in early July of this year, which was focus coding. We identified the most important categories, and we went into them and we searched for themes. And once we had themes, we put them together into united theory. And we shared our findings with participants back in March, and we're doing it again tonight. In terms of, we developed an interview protocol back in, in the winter of 2020. And we piloted it with the coaches to clarify the purpose of our study and to build trust with them. And then we emailed student-athletes and their families in November, and anyone who was interested in participating was invited to do so and did so. And we had six focus groups between January and May.
Dr. Strus, before I get into my, my slides, if you could just talk about your background with, with this type of research?
Yeah, thank you. This was, grounded theory was, was, was my dissertation, or was the methodology of my dissertation. And so, again, to find another research topic and to find another context in which it could be useful and to serve the district that I've proudly worked for, for 16 years, has, has, has been a pleasure. So yes, I was, I was a good fit for this one, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So participating in our focus groups were 14 student-athletes, seven varsity coaches, and 16 parents. Thirty varsity sports were represented, 16 junior varsity sports, three freshmen, and two unified sports. Seventeen boys' sports, 10 girls' sports, and four alumni experience were represented. The breakdowns of sports and genders represented were not intentional, but instead simply a reflection of the volunteers that were available for those particular focus groups. Additionally, with this small sample size, recommendations throughout the presentation are not meant for immediate implementation, but to promote further discussion with stakeholders. Dr. Strus?
So, yes. So after we transcribed the data, like I said earlier, we went through two, two major rounds of analysis. The first was initial coding, which is we were summarizing what we were hearing from our participants and placing it into categories, and then counting how much material was in each category and ranking it. What were the biggest to smallest? And then in July, we started again diving into those codes to search for themes and connect the themes to one another. We, we found some initial codes from a preliminary review of the literature from the MIAA and the National Federation of High Schools, which, which talked about the results of participation in just scholastic athletics. But of the 29 codes, I'd say the majority were what we call in vivo, which is they emerged from the data themselves.
So our next over slides provide information from your review from our preliminary report in April. For the purpose of time, though we have included this information, we will only highlight it. And you can see our preliminary report contained 29,820 words, where the final report in the, the coding contains 97,681 words and 738 comments. The top five codes from the initial coding, adversity at 15.7%, enriching the student-athlete experience at 12.6%, conflicts and problems at 10.2%, connection to coaches and student-athletes at 9.5%, and life lessons reinforced and taught to student-athletes at 7.7%.
Rounding out the top 10, we had connections to teammates, which was 7%, communication, which was 4.5%, connections between parents and coaches, which was represented 4.4% of the data, connections between student-athletes and older role models, which was 4% of the data, and finally, meaningful experiences, which was 3.64% of the data. So if you look at the, the top 10, four of the top 10 had to do with connection.
And now, as we work into getting into the, the final report here, I'm just going to slowly go through these slides just to let you scan them. Again, this is previously presented information. In the interest of time, we wanted to include them. Let's scroll through.
So two important ideas that come up, and Jim, if you could go back to slide 20, please, that would be great. Two, two ideas that jump out when you look at the top 10. Adversity was the number one code, right? 15,000 words, which is reminiscent of Angela Duckworth's research on grit from 2016. She defines grit as perseverance in pursuit of a long-term goal, and she posits that it can be taught and developed over a lifetime. And as you're going to see in, in our recommendations and in our deeper analysis, this is going to be an important idea that surfaces, as is the research of Sean Acor on the next slide. Sean Acor was the professor of the happiness class at Harvard, and he wrote a book called The Happiness Advantage. And he said that we've, we've pushed happiness beyond our cognitive horizon, because we say, work hard, succeed, and then you can be happy. And what he argues is that, no, it actually should be flipped to work hard, be happy, and then you will succeed, because research and psychology has proven definitively that a positive mindset allows your brain to work harder, faster, and more intelligently. So happiness and grit are two ideas that we're going to be returning to a lot in this presentation as we move forward. Thanks, Jim.
And you can see here in slide 23, the connections and meaningful relationships is a theme that has emerged throughout our work. The continued need to purposely, purposefully intentionally develop meaningful relationships among all stakeholders was seen loudly and clearly in the data. Selected quotes from the qualitative data will be used periodically here to best represent most of the comments in that code. As student athlete five shared with us, the biggest impact on me is just being a part of a team, and just how personally it's helped me outside of school and in school, too. I will see a teammate in a hallway, and I'll feel more confident because I'm friends with him. Like, he may be a senior, but we're friends, and I'm a sophomore. So the whole aspect of being close with kids of all ages and just being in it together has positively changed me. Just the last couple of slides here that are related to the preliminary report. Preliminary findings in regard to connections also identified areas for improvement. As student athlete one offered, the communication between coaches and players, coaches and parents, and coaches at all levels of play could be a little bit better than it is. And our final highlight of the preliminary report is from parent number three. The most meaningful thing has been watching the kids work as a team, the backroom stuff, the locker rooms, and the camaraderie. Those are the most meaningful things. The championships are great in, in the leadership, but those are the most valuable things. The life lessons that they get to take from being together, from the sport itself. Now, as I slowly scroll through these last preliminary slides, Dr. Strus will pick us up with the first look at, at the final report. Dr. Strus?
Yes, thank you, Jim. So the recommendations that we just scrolled through, we decided to move quickly through in the interest of time, but also because they get repeated. Despite the cycle of analysis that we went through, these were ideas that emerged again and again. So we're going to get to them. Don't worry, we're not moving away from them. But when we, when we dove into the top 10 codes that represented 79% of the data and 77,000 of the nine, or 78,000 of the 97,000 words that we analyzed, we needed a way to frame it, a way to, how could we make sense of this and present all this information in a way that, that is logical? So kind of building off Dr. LeBilois's talk about RIDES, when he was talking at eight o'clock, about this cycle of improvement that he wants to go through with the Equity Group, we, we used a very similar idea. It's from Richard Elmore. He's a famous educational researcher, also from Harvard. And when he was researching educational transformation in the New York City Public Schools, he coined this phrase, a cycle of continuous improvement, right? Which basically boils down to, what's the goal? How will we get there? How will we know when the work is done? So we want to present the findings from the focus coding, from the final cycle of coding, in exactly that structure. The goals that emerged from our analysis first, and then the ideas about how to reach those goals, how will we get there, emerging second. But instead of a cycle of continuous improvement, we want to, we, we just re-coined this, rephrased this, chasing greatness.
So as we chase greatness, and the best versions of each of our programs in collective department, we've identified the most effective formula to improve the student-athlete's experience at Hingham High School. That's our number one goal with this work. If stakeholders support coaches' efforts to disseminate best practices for building a positive team culture and setting clear expectations, and if the community supports the work, then stakeholders can maximize student-athletes' learning of important life lessons, help them build strong bonds with their teammates and coaches, have more fun, and reach or surpass their potential. Focus group participants identified several goals for us for future work. Life Lessons was number five in the final top 10 of codes. 7,525 words, 54 comments, and 7.7% of the, of the data. And the data showed that the participants defined the most important lessons to be time management, grit, focus, positive thinking, teamwork, and leadership. In considering these life lessons, parent number four offered, not making captain as a three-year varsity player was heartbreaking to her, and not making it again her senior year. Not understanding what goes into making a captain was difficult. From a parent's perspective, it seemed like a popularity contest. There's been a lot of disappointment, but also a lot of joy and self-confidence. In a particularly inspirational moment for me, parent number five shared a quote attributed to General Douglas MacArthur, "On the fields of friendly strife are sown the seeds that upon other fields on other days will bear the fruits of victory." We have several recommendations, as I said, that are designed to promote further discussion with stakeholders, but recommendations for the continued purposeful and intentional development of life lessons with our student-athletes at coaches' direction. First, reinforcing providing constructive feedback after the tryout process. The Boys' Ice Hockey Program System was one that was particularly mentioned as, as one that parents and student-athletes alike appreciated. And in, on one particular spring team this past spring, based on this work, they worked through that system in collaborating boys' hockey to the, to the spring program. I think truly a testament of, of how useful this work will be moving forward. Allowing for a greater emphasis in nurturing the relationships within a program across grades, that came through loud and clear. The impact that being acknowledged and appreciated by an upperclassman has on an underclassman was profound, and carried over just to positive, positively influencing them both on the field of competition and during the school day. And continuing to stress that wins and losses are, are not a means, are a means, not an end. When we focus on the quality of the journey and our priorities, we expect that our success will continue for our programs. We will continue to encourage student-athletes to play multiple sports, and we will begin collaborating with stakeholders to develop guidelines that help to arbitrate scheduling conflicts between sports and extracurricular activities, such as music, drama, art, and other clubs. And finally, we'll work with coaches to help further develop formal team bonding opportunities. One, one moment in particular that, that stuck out was a boys' lacrosse trip to New York several years ago to visit Ground Zero and talk to, to folks that were very directly impacted by, by the event, the tragedy.
So teaching life lessons is an important goal that emerged from the data, but another one was about connection, connection between teammates. Connection between teammates, and as Coach alluded to, it has the potential for a profound and positive impact on, on the student athletes. There were 17 comments about it, and something that emerged a lot was that when you're an underclassman, you gain a lot of confidence and self-esteem when you're welcomed to the team by upperclassmen. However, this is a reciprocal relationship. It's not a one-way street because that's a meaningful endeavor for the upperclassmen as well. And there were three comments that reported that when upperclassmen did this, when they welcomed the younger players, they felt confident, they felt that their, their participation in the sport was more meaningful. And it was beautiful to see that these bonds transferred beyond the athletic fields, beyond the classrooms, and, and far beyond their experiences at Hingham High School. So that was really important. The connection between coaches and parents was another important theme that emerged and set a goal, hopefully for the future work of the department. There was plenty of evidence of healthy and productive relationships between coaches and parents. But in the interest of time, I think it's the most productive to focus on the areas that were tense, right? Miscommunication between coaches and parents did cause tension, specifically about returning to play after injury. And also managing commitments between sports and the myriad of extracurricular opportunities that student athletes have here at the high school to participate in art, in drama, in music, in student government. And there are scores of, of clubs and activities. So managing that was a source of conflict as well. Two parents reported a perception of unfair parent influence in a tryout for a particular sport. And another thing that emerged, another theme that emerged was that a toxic relationship between coaches and parents can spill over and really poison the experience for the entire team. So these were some, some, some themes that emerged. So it's some recommendations that come from this about strengthening the bonds between all the stakeholders. Coaches make, are encouraged to continue to create rituals that welcome new players. And Coach Quatermoni will talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. Coaches may think about assigning official mentors to the younger players on their team. And coaches may think about developing end-of-year surveys because now there's some clarity about what they could ask about, right? Are the student athletes learning life lessons? Do they feel connected to their teammates? Do they feel connected to the older players? Do they feel connected to the captains and to the coaches, right? And I would recommend, as I just kind of removed my researcher hat and talk about this as a teacher, this is a procedure that's, that's well-established in all departments here at the school, right? For example, in English, I'm an English teacher. At the end of the year in our department meetings, Mary Andrews, who's also on the call tonight, will remind us, everybody, you know, don't forget to use your end-of-the-year surveys as we get, you know, as we close out the spring. After you analyze the data that you get from the students, I'd be happy if you have any questions about it or if you have any, you know, you need some, some ideas about strategies you could implement to respond to it. I'm happy to have that conversation with you. If you need any help or support on this process in any way, I'm here for you. And oh, by the way, I have my own survey to evaluate my performance, so I'm going to lead by example here. So please fill that out for me so I can do my work. So this is an established procedure and hopefully a procedure that coaches are encouraged to develop. And those, those surveys can be informed by a lot of the, the themes that emerged from this particular study. In addition, preseason meetings are so important, right? And the clarity of communication that happened at, at those meetings, what is the practice schedule? What are the game schedules? What are the expectations to make this team? Are they clear? What are the expectations to be a starter and to get playing time on this team? And are those expectations clear to everybody? And if I want to be a captain, how do I do it? Please be clear about those expectations as well. So those are important elements or important potential recommendations that can strengthen the bonds between the coaches and the players. And then a uniform standard of communication for coaches is really important. Just, it's here for the teachers already, and it needs to be here for the coaches as well. And then educational leaders are encouraged to articulate and consistently enforce high standards of polite behavior between the parents and the coaches. And then the conversations from which these themes emerged and these ideas for improvement emerged as well, these conversations should continue, something like coffee with the A.D. regularly that brings people together to continue to talk about how is this experience for the student athletes and how can we make it better?
So when we consider the how-to in achieving our goals, one thing that can derail us is inconsistent communication. As parent seven, seven offered, I think the consistency in the way things operate across sports programs and communication is an overarching theme that all, all the sports programs can improve on and the athletics department can improve upon. I think when you consider this slide, some coaches make themselves extremely available at, at all times where other coaches give guidance on, on when they would be available. And I think that that can, can be a drag in, in both directions. And I think it's upon us to come up with some recommendations to, to be more consistent with those, with that communication. Several programs were identified for best practices in dealing with all levels of communication. Student athlete seven offered, I stopped holding everything in and started telling my teammates and my coaches how I was really feeling, and they helped me a lot. Clearly, on all levels, effective communication is empowering. So in the next few slides, I'll outline some recommendations for improved communication at all levels. We need all stakeholders to work together and model high standards of behavior in communicating at any level. We need to provide coaches with space and time to share best practices more than just in our preseason meetings. Need to consider updating our coaches' handbook to set clear expectations for all stakeholders and outline and enforce the norms. Our coaches are encouraged each season in the preseason and to, to update this throughout the season to offer student athletes what we call a safe time. This is a predetermined time that coaches let student athletes know that they'll be available to talk, whether it be to, to just simply ask a question and seek some clarity or whether self-advocacy is required. So student athlete seven offered in, in considering safe times. I know we are encouraged to do that, but sometimes it can be awkward, especially as a freshman. I was a little nervous to go up to a coach and say, "I'm struggling with this." And I thought it would be embarrassing for me to talk about, talk to my coach saying, "I don't get what's going on," or "I'm not comfortable with how I'm, I'm doing," something like that. So maybe just a little more of the coaches reaching out. I think that when you consider that, that we need to have coaches go further to help student athletes learn how to respectfully advocate for themselves and time invested outside of the issue or outside of, outside of conflict. This could happen in small groups, or it could happen individually. Again, outside of any, any moment of conflict, taking advantage of the time that we have with student athletes after school is almost always time that they want to be there. And we really get to design those, that time in a way that, as you, as we've talked about, will maximize life lessons. And in this time that we live in, sports psychology has been increasingly important consideration in making coaching decisions across the board. Exploring after-school access to a guidance counselor or a sports psychologist would certainly help student athletes with anything that they might be dealing with, up to and including self-advocacy, mental health issues, whatever it might be, would have tremendous value. We're going to work with coaches to encourage scheduling one-on-one meetings with student athletes throughout the season. As we said, not just at the end of the year. We're going to increase the amount of time that a coach can interact individually with a student athlete. Will help further prevent, increasing that time will help further prevent an issue from becoming a problem and make any initial conversation hopefully easier to start in terms of considering the safe time. And work with coaches, develop surveys for their student athletes to evaluate their experience with the coaches in, in considering the new priorities that we are putting forward in these recommendations, specifically addressing the driving of life lessons, connectedness, and communication. And then we need to better articulate how student athletes can report to school leaders regarding any issues that are potentially dangerous and establish a, a need that, that we have identified in terms of having, when, when we are in safety issues or, or discrimination or injustice, that we have an anonymous way that things can be reported so that they can be appropriately dealt with.
All right. So now talking about, you know, we have all of these goals. But another thing, as we looked at the themes and, and we created this, this, this theory, the if-then statements you saw back in the middle of the presentation, you know, how are we going to get there, right? So some of the themes, we're talking about how we're going to get there, and this is one, clear expectations for tryouts. One of the coaches said, "There are some tough cuts, and that's a challenge that I deal with every year, and I try to make the tryouts as fair as I can. I have a rubric. It's as evidence-based as it could be. And again, I communicate with the parents." Now, a parent whose child played for this coach had this to say, and this is a follow-up question that we asked. So do you feel that that is a part of this? I asked, I said, "The decisions may be influenced, the decisions to make on who makes the team may be influenced by colleagues of the coach who coach AAU or perhaps other families in Hingham who the coach is close to?" And the parent said, "Absolutely, absolutely." Do I feel that it happens all the time? No, but I do think that the appearance of it happens. So clear expectations for tryouts is a concern. However, what also emerged from this study were examples of best practices of this, especially for the children. And I'll get to that in just a second. But as Coach said earlier, boys' ice hockey, right? Here was a parent describing their tryouts and how they talk about the results of tryouts. So it says, "The coach gets every single coach, and they sit down in a room, and they get every single kid. And if you get cut, the coach gives you a reason. And if you make the team, he gives you a reason. And it might be hard for the coaches, but that, that's their job. That's their responsibility. If you're going to be a coach and a leader, you should have the guts to do that with each individual kid because they've given their time to try out, so you should give your time and effort to explain." So that was an example of best practices. And as Coach said, one of the, after our preliminary findings, one of the spring teams actually tried that method. But here's the desired outcome. This is from a, a, a young lady on the girls' crew team. And it shows clarity in terms of expectations for a tryout. It, it shows a reflectiveness. It shows grit. This, to me, is the gold standard. This is what we want for everybody across the board. And the, the child said, "I just want to add to my teammate's point that it," and she means tryouts, "are completely unbiased. So if you're in a boat, then you earned your spot. And if you're not in the boat that you want, then you can't be mad at anybody, not the other teammates, not the coaches. You can only be reflective of yourself and how hard you work. And if you want to move up, then you, like, work harder. You can't really hold a grudge against a teammate who just worked, who worked just as hard as you did. We want this for everyone." So again, clarity with what the expectations are to make the team and then consistency across all the programs and the teams to make sure that everybody understands what the standards are. And again, as Coach said, the teachers, the coaches, they need the space and the time to share these best practices for making the expectations for tryouts clear and for reporting the results of tryouts to their student athletes.
Playing time is another area that can provide frustration for student athletes and potentially families. And if we do not purposely offer clarity across programs as to how playing time is distributed, a disconnect can result. Coach four offered the following in, in this regard. They just thought it was an expectation that they were going to play because they were juniors, for no other reason, not for the work. It was just that they thought because they were now a junior that they were entitled to playing time. So it was understanding that you have to work and actually do things outside of practice and outside of the season to get better, to earn playing time. Recommend, recommendations in terms of playing time, we'll work with coaches to achieve the goal of consistency and clarity in terms of how playing time is earned and distributed. And sometimes those, those are difficult conversations, but I do think that we can go a step further in, in helping student athletes and their families better understand where we land. And again, you know, the, the need for additional time and space for coaches to get together and share best practices. When we have seasonal meetings and we, each seasonal meeting with all the coaches in that particular season, we'll go around the room with name, sport you coach, position you have, years at Hingham High School, and years coaching. There are hundreds, hundreds of years in every room. And just prior to COVID, we had started to use that room for professional development when we didn't have a program that would be coming in that day. And we have resources on staff that, that are invaluable. So though we do have a process for selecting captains, there was considerable data that suggests this topic needs a fresh look. Parent four offered the following. "I think that those that want to be captain should stand up and speak to what they bring to the team and how they want to help so that more of the people that want to be captain have a formal way to explain themselves. I would like to see that cleaned up across the board." Basically, this process told her daughter that she wasn't popular enough to be captain, and it's been hard. So as I said, we're recommending a fresh look at the current guidance in the handbook to get to a place of clear and consistent expectations on what it takes to become a captain. We want that process to mirror a democratic process to prepare student athletes for a democratic life with the idea prominent for student athletes by the student athletes.
So another idea or another theme that emerged that we put in this, this broader, broader category of like, how are we going to get there? How are we going to achieve these goals is about developing student athletes' curiosity. And this interchange with a parent illustrates the point. So they're getting mixed messages, right? I said, "Explore your interests and be well-rounded, but narrow your focus and only do the sport." And the parent said, "Right. It goes back to something that parent number three said. It's that that small percentage of kids go on to do athletics in college, and that's so small. Obviously, that's not including clubs and things like that, so you want them to explore these things." So I just took verbiage right out of the final report. "All stakeholders should encourage all student athletes to enjoy a rich and varied high school experience that fosters their sense of curiosity and guides them on a path to discovering their passions in life. This is simply the right thing to do." We need to, I recommend that we develop guidelines that will manage conflicts between interscholastic athletics and students' commitments to music and art and student government and debate and any of the scores of other opportunities that they have here at this, at the school. And this, this, this data highlights the importance of H block, that time in the day that so many other schools have that we don't have yet, where students can do whatever they need to do. If they need remediation, they can go do that. If they need to make up work, they can go do that. If they just need to sit and organize their lives and have an adult help them, they can do that. Or if they want to go rehearse, you know, the show-stopping number to end, end the, end of the concert, they can go do that. Or if they just need to go knit or pet the dog or take a walk, right? This, this meets the social and emotional needs of the children. It meets the academic needs of the children. And it would help develop the sense of curiosity so that athletics is a complement and not a competitor in, in helping these children find their passions in life and learn as much, as many life lessons as they possibly can. So, you know, again, another thing about how are we going to get there is, is fun. Sports should be fun. But oddly enough, this was an outlier code. There were only 1,300 words spoken about fun at all, only 1.3% of the data. But this quote was really powerful from student athlete number one. She said, "I feel like sometimes the yelling and losing the teaching, it sometimes takes away from the reason why we play a sport. People play sports because they love them, and they want to have fun, and they love the team. And that's helped me learn that if I'm having a tough moment or if I've had a coach who's been a little bit too harsh on me, I just step back and I ask myself, 'Why am I playing this?' And I make sure that I'm having fun." And so all stakeholders, well, one recommendation that comes from this data analysis is that all stakeholders should recognize, stop, and replace authoritarian coaching. Coaching should be positive or not at all. And, and as COVID restrictions hopefully lighten up, some of the, some of the things that, that are fun about sports hopefully can come back, like continuing to celebrate the teams and the individual accomplishments on morning announcements. And student athletes can resume attending their classmates' games and, and resume swapping jerseys with their friends. And, and also in terms of coaches, continuing to do a great job of balancing that culture of competition with a culture of fun and support is going to be so important. And then finally, freedom is fun. So the freedom to choose your own captains without interference from the coach is another way that, that we all could help make sports more fun here at the school.
So the meaningful experience code ranked number 10 in the top 10 of the final report's codes. Six parents and two student athletes said that life lessons were the most meaningful part of their experience at Hingham High School. Data suggests that a further emphasis on coaching intentionally, teaching independence, responsibility, resilience, time management, stress management, perseverance, and speaking up against justice should be prioritized. and speaking up against justice should be prioritized. Recommendation for this intentional work includes athletic department mission, developing an athletic department mission statement that includes leadership, life lessons and leadership, grit, positive thinking. Working with coaches to focus on positive coaching strategies and with school leaders to help achieve the H block for athletes to practice life lessons or whatever other interests they would like to take to that new programming. Again, we want coaches to schedule more frequent one-on-one meetings to help student athletes with goal setting and monitoring their progress. We seek that all stakeholders encourage student athletes to play multiple sports, helping them learn as many life lessons as possible through those different experiences. Invaliding the power of one-on-one coach interaction with student athletes, parent 11 offered the following. I just want to add that the, that the one-on-one feedback from the coach is like gold, not just at the tryout or the end of the season, continuously. I think it says to the players that they care, they're interested, you're valuable. My two college players wish all the time they would get more. And it's the first thing we always ask after every game or practice of our child. What did the coach say? We just want to ensure he's learning.
So another idea that talked about how we can achieve these goals or another theme that emerged that talked about how we could achieve these goals was, came out of the meaningful experience code, again, which was ranked number 10. And the parents said that athletic success was meaningful, was important, that winning was important and that being called up to play at a higher level was meaningful as well. So this was just validation that coaches in this department, they set high standards for the children to live up to. And we recommend they just keep doing what they're doing.
In further considering how we improve the overall experience for our student athletes, five parents and seven student athletes talked about importance of unity between all levels of, of a program, all teams, repeated importance of building strong bonds between upperclassmen and underclassmen. Best practices were identified in several of these teams listed. So it's clear that, that in considering the experience, when the head varsity coach is the steward for the entire program and all participants feel included and that their, their, their value and their participation is, is equal regardless of level or, or importance to a team, that that helps to promote the best experience across the board for our, for our student athletes. And with that, captains that model unity and, and accept that it isn't just the varsity and the JV and the freshmen are over in the other room, but instead that it again is one program. And we feel that an alumni network can potentially help with that. And the booster parents continuing to help with communication and networking. A united culture across levels of programs clearly emerged from the data, as I said, and we'll continue to work with coaches on best practices in that regard. And we'll work with coaches to make this a prominent part of their reflective process, both individually and in the evaluation process with me. And we'll continue to ask booster parents to help nurture unity and inclusion at all levels of particular programs. This could be, this next slide, the most important culture item that we discussed tonight. My number one responsibility as the director of athletics at Hingham High School is the safe implementation of interscholastic athletics at Hingham High School. Some of the data suggests that we need to be more purposeful and intentional in effectively communicating this to student athletes and their families, as well as our coaches. Parent nine offered, I have seen my own children and other children play injured. There is pressure because you're a starter, you're a contributor, and we want you on the field. If you're not 100%, you're a starter, then you're popping Advil and Tylenol and anything else you can take and you're getting on the field. That creates a lot of adversity. That, for me, is, as I, to repeat myself, that can't happen. Okay, my number one priority is the safety of our student athletes, and I will work tirelessly to change this. A different type of safety could be better categorized as discriminatory behavior or injustice. Parent 10 offered, if there had been a confidential way for the students on the Duxbury team to report the audibles at the end of the season, I feel like one or more kids may have done that. There was no real safe way for a teenage kid to come forward with info like that. So I feel that it's upon us, I feel that it's upon us to develop this anonymous way for this information to come forward. You know, I make it my practice to be as present as I can across programs. But when you consider the unfortunate incidents that occurred in Duxbury and how long they were allowed to continue, I think we're compelled to, to create an answer to the question as to how could we have, how can we work to prevent a situation like that occurring here at Hingham? And what steps or what tools can we give student athletes or their families to, to allow to report, whether it be an unsafe situation, a discriminatory behavior, or an injustice? Recommendation in, in, in this regard, all stakeholders, please, you know, whether it's in your loud voice or your quiet voice, repeat after us, safety first, safety first. We need to communicate the current reporting procedure and develop an anonymous option for significant potential issues. And continue focus groups or develop a coffee with the AD to provide additional opportunities to give feedback and further develop meaningful relationships.
So the final topic, or the second to last topic before we wrap this thing up that we were talking about is community support. You know, when we talk about how can we achieve these goals? And so enriched the experience was the number two ranked category with 12,000 words in it, and it took up 13%. It accounted for 13% of all the data. And there's some disconnect here with the community. And so we want to raise awareness about this and offer some recommendations. So one parent talked about, we hear those messages every year and they're crystal clear. I don't think there are any questions about what the expectations are. But I think there's a group out there where it goes in one ear and out the other. Also, a coach talked about the disconnect between the coaches and the community in achieving, you know, the goal of giving the student athletes the best possible experience that they can have at our school. And he said, we're doing everything we can to help. And then you're getting a phone call on Christmas and you're getting attacked coming off the field and you're getting an email with game film, clicked to the minutes that someone is counting someone's minutes on the field. And you're getting an anonymous email or an anonymous letter with the author telling you why another kid shouldn't be playing over this kid and just trashing kids. To me, that's really what the adversity is. And it makes you wonder why we want to do this. Further, there was a lot of talk about the survey from the Hingham Sports Partnership. Four comments, 1,000 words. It took up 9% of the data in this particular category of enriched experiences. The purpose of the, the, the survey was to identify and to help coaches identify and disseminate best practices so that they could improve their craft. But it surveyed parents. An evaluative survey of coaches that asks parents for their feedback is both unnecessary and invalid for the very simple reason that the coaches didn't coach the parent and that the parent may have watched the game, but they weren't at all the practices. It's, it's similar to, as an English teacher, if I, as an English teacher, were judged solely on the, my students' performances on standardized tests. It's a piece of the process, but not the biggest piece. So again, that came up. It's an area of tension, an area of disconnect. And again, if a survey is implemented, it should be by the coaches, for the coaches' reflective process, with the support of the athletic director, just the same process that is used throughout all the departments here at the school. And as Jamie was talking about with his equity work, this is not a blame and shame effort, nor should it ever be. This is about education and empowerment and all working together to help the student athletes have the best possible experience that they could have here and learn as much about life as they possibly can and build as strong, as many strong bonds as they possibly can before they leave us.
One correction to this slide. The survey that went out previous that's being referenced in the enriched experience data was sent out by the athletic department. It did not go out from an outside organization.
So another area of tension between the community and the athletics department was boosters and the role of boosters. And parent number seven said, another thing is booster influence. In my opinion, a booster parent's role and job should be to support the player and to support the coaches and to ask the coaches, quote, "Coach, how can I help you make the student athletes' experience better?" Period. That's it. I know for a fact that we have programs where booster influence is inappropriate with respect to tryouts and who makes the team. I know that it happens. I know firsthand that it happens.
So recommendations for community supports include a refocus on trust, mutual respect, responsibility, and assuming best intentions. Educational leaders establish and enforce high standards of play behavior for all stakeholders, student athletes, coaches, and parents alike. And remember that we are all role models, especially of positive thinking for our student athletes. And when you go back to what Dr. Struz referenced earlier with the, the idea of happiness, that, that if we can assume best intentions and, and work to deal with adversity that we know is coming, and the data has shown that we embrace in terms of being a tool to help reinforce life lessons. If we can do that with positive thinking, we will truly help student athletes work hard or work harder, be joyful, and to succeed.
And so as we wrap this up, the limitations of the study where we had an incomplete pilot, we should have asked for feedback from the parents and from the student athletes regarding the clarity and purpose of the survey questions. We employed a sample of convenience. We did not randomly select from groups and subgroups, and that would have strengthened the validity of our study, as would a bigger sample. Our sample size was not 250 people, which is what's known in the, in the business as a strong N. And a more efficient data collection and analysis method would, would help with this work as it continues. This has been 175 hours of data collection and analysis. And now that we have a sharper focus and in a way forward, I think that we can use more efficient methods. And then finally, areas of future research, we should narrow our focus. Now we have a sharper idea of what we're looking at, right? So let's talk about what we're doing and how that's influencing outcomes. What's the relationship between these factors? Some other important future research efforts have to be exploring equity, the perceptions of equity between boys and girls. And as we learned at 8:56 PM tonight from Dr. Liviloa, the role of diversity, inclusion in, in the athletics department. And then finally, we're talking about all these important life lessons and these strong bonds that the children learn. But does that learning last? Does it stick? Does it last? So focusing on longitudinal outcomes could be very helpful also. Our work cited follows, and that's all.
Well, thank you very much. Do you want to come out of the chair?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Does anyone in the committee have questions? Michelle?
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much for that, all the work that went into that. I do have a couple of questions. One thing that just struck out, struck, struck me, and Dr. Struzario mentioned it in the limitations. But do you have, so that there were so few, the sample size was very small. Do you have a feeling as to why there were so few students who participated? And do, and what I guess, and then the follow-up question is, and then how can you, what are you thinking for plans for as you continue to work? Because Coach's talking on it, go ahead.
I think some of the challenges the COVID presented and almost the, the feeling of isolation at times in terms of working through the school year last year, where maybe I may have sat in the cafeteria with a signup sheet and walked around and asked, maybe talked to tables about the program and to see if they would want to sign up for it. You know, sending an email, it did generate a pool of interested student athletes. But I always think that being able to, to look at a group of, of young people, explain what you're trying to do, show the passion that you have for the work and that you're simply trying to help them in their experience, that we certainly could have generated greater interest among student athletes. And then moving forward, moving forward, I think that, that if we continue with this focus group project, I, I think just simply a greater number of, of participants to have had the chance to talk. I do agree with Dr. Struzero that coming up with ways to evaluate this data more efficiently would be necessary. This was very time-consuming, as you can see from what, what we've produced. But I think it, it's been valuable time spent when you consider that I think it'll be a roadmap for some future discussions and work, and work to be done. I do think reaching out and considering running some focus group with alumni, as Dr. Struzero mentioned at the end, would be useful and would potentially give us valuable information. I don't know if I answered all your questions, Michelle?
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. I think, yeah, I mean, I think despite the fact that it was a limited number of students, parents and coaches, I think though that some really great stuff came out of this. Like I really support a lot of the recommendations, particularly the, the tryout feedback. I think that would be hugely successful for the students. I, I like the idea of the surveys for sure, sort of the end of year or end of season, maybe even mid-season to make some course corrections when, when needed. And I do really applaud the, the encouragement of the reporting procedure to alert leaders for any unsafe, whether it be physical safety, emotional safety, everything. So I really do, I really encourage that. I think that is really a thoughtful approach. And I, I know it's hard sometimes to want to accept anonymous feedback, but I think it's spot on that, particularly when it comes to the safety of students, that it's necessary to have that sort, that process in place. So I think that's great. And I think the only other question I had, and, and Dr. Jamie talked about a little bit, was just, I was just curious about the coach training that, that are available. Are there any required trainings that the coaches have to take every year? What's sort of the training like for the coaches? And do you have ideas about how you want to work with them this year?
So coaches within two years of their hire are required to be certified by the MIA through the Federation. On a yearly basis, we go through CPR, AED, EpiPen, and heat requirements, as well as concussion protocol training. I think when we look seasonally, we've tried to turn one aspect of, of the seasonal meetings into professional development with coaches catered around a topic that, that we would come up with. Certainly that, going to Zoom and the other, the additional requirements and guidelines and precautions that we needed to follow with our Zoom preseason meetings got gobbled up by that. But I'm looking forward to getting back to that and using, Positive Coaching Alliance has been valuable to us in the past. And EJSP has been very generous in, in bringing them in. But, but as well, generating discussion of best practices among our staff. I mean, the experiences that, that we have in that room are valuable and the, the conversations and the sharing, it's been lively. And it's, it's been a lot of fun to, to, to be in that room and watch the cooperation that you see from coach to coach. You know, I've abandoned another district. It's, it's uncommon, the way that these staffs, even when they're, you know, competing seasonally and, and in some ways competing for kids, the generosity that they, that they offer to each other. We had a coach that was particularly inspired by something that he read just the other day. I forwarded this to Dr. Struzero, who sent this out to all of our varsity coaches, talking about his pride in our program and what, what each coach means to him in terms of his work he does to be the best version of himself. So, you know, I think that we have a culture here that allows us to identify things and the cooperation of coaches to, to, to dig in and do the work that we need when we identify an area that we need to improve.
And Michelle, can I jump in here too? I mean, I mean, so essentially, some of these coaches need teaching 101, teaching strategies 101, right? And as an institution, we've, we've made a decision or it appears that we've made a decision that we want to cast a wide net and invite as many possible members of the community to participate in the education of the children as we possibly can, because as many role models as we can put in front of them will reach more kids that way, right? And that makes sense. Unfortunately, what you get is a lot of coaches are teachers and a lot of them aren't. And the ones that aren't don't have some of the foundational training that we all got in our master's programs. I mean, as I'm going through these recommendations over and over again to prepare for this meeting, all I can think of is John all I can think of is John Saffir's The Skillful Teacher. It's like the how-to book that we all read in the first class that we took in graduate school. And it's like, how to get parents on your side, how to communicate effectively with parents and students. It's like the basic stuff that some of these coaches need that they don't have, because their profession is something different. And it's an easy fix. It's an easy fix.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Carlos?
I appreciate the presentation. It was very good. I mean, long time working on this, so congratulations. You identified that the boosters can be influential, and they are. And I didn't see, as part of a recommendation, what would you do to address it, to ensure that there is equity? Obviously, we wanted to make sure that there is no violation of Title IX, that the girls' boosters are not providing more incentives to the players or to the coaches than the boys and et cetera. So what is your recommendation to address the influence over, you know, the coach and things like that?
So in terms of the comment about Title IX and expenditures, the next step with booster clubs is going to need to be collecting what comes in in terms of what the fundraisers are, what they've generated, and what goes out, and recording that to make sure that it is in Title IX compliance. We didn't include that here because I think when, we tried not to present issues that we saw as issues, but let the data present the issues. And I think that the slide that you're referencing was more a description from a parent that talked about, you know, a parent is in the role of a booster president and has a greater level of access to the head coach, as the head coach is a primary part of making sure that the boosters remain in compliance, and that there can be a perception that that increased access and potentially a relationship that develops can be interpreted as generating an advantage in making a team or getting playing time. And I think that that's going to be about getting back to strengthening and developing meaningful relationships across the board here with clear explanations of how we earn and distribute playing time across the board. And I think it comes, it's interesting that some of the themes from Dr. Labilawa's presentation and just refocusing on a trust between all stakeholders and doing the work that it takes to get there would be my recommendation. And hopefully, I answered both sides of the question.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes?
Thanks so much for all of this work. I can tell how much effort went into it. I am disappointed, I guess, in the number of people, participants. I wish that it was a bigger population, and I don't think we have the, all of the sports covered, just given the number of teams that are there. So I would suggest that maybe you reach out to the coaches next time or the captains next time and ask them to send out emails to their, to the team, because you might be able to get more participation that way.
Yes, that's what we did at the end, when I was not getting responses from student athletes that had previously expressed interest. Or, you know, we did try, I wouldn't normally have done this, but we did try to steer away from freshmen, not because they were freshmen, but more because we knew that the COVID experience was not ideal. We were all struggling through that. But I take your point in, you know, ultimately, you know, as we explained in one of the limitations is the small sample size, but ultimately, to get a better picture here, I think covering all teams would make great sense.
Yeah. And then I guess just in combination with what Jamie and I have been working on with the stuff, we hear in our courageous conversations, things that come up, you know, on the teams that I think the kids think they are forming a bond, but there are some inappropriate things happening where they'll give them a nickname, you know, a racial slur type nickname, and kids are thinking that they're building these relationships with one another. And the person who is the receiver might not feel comfortable with that, but they don't want to, you know, shake, you know, test the waters. So if there is an ability for them to provide that feedback somehow in an anonymous way, so that there could be a coaching lesson that comes out of that process, I think that would be a helpful mechanism.
I would agree with you, and I would love to talk to you and/or talk to Labilawa offline to just gain a little more insight into what you were just explaining. You were kind of going in and out a little bit there, but I got the sense that, you know, inappropriate names and even racial names, that they think they're building relationships. You know, we've dealt with several situations where someone that has been accused of being on that line will defend themselves in saying that, oh, they laughed, it was funny. And the journey that we have to go through to help them understand, you know, I use the line quite frequently, is that this country is full of unemployed comedians, let's have higher aspirations, and let's dig into the work here. These are inappropriate things to say to anybody. But I would be, I'm looking forward to Dr. Labilawa's presentation and that work influencing athletics and being part of the process. I enjoyed the restorative justice training over the summer. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how it can influence athletics.
Great. Thank you.
Liza?
So thank you for the presentation. I was looking forward to it. I will share that on asking athletes to participate. I know my own daughter was, wanted to do it, but had such a busy schedule with everything going on. So that's part of it too, of just the times that were, you know, offered, people weren't always free at all those times. So whatever we do in the future, you know, it's always better to have more people. But I will share to the committee that knowing this presentation was coming up, Coach Q and I met last week, and I filled him in on our new wellness committee that is to cover wellness subcommittee, athletics, and equity. School committee knew that this work was going on, and I offered up our subcommittee to support him in tackling these issues. And whether it's from a policy standpoint, or looking at, you know, especially with the boosters and money, that's kind of our realm too, and, you know, other districts and how they do things, and to support making these initiatives happen, or evaluating if we need more resources to do it. So Jim and I talked about several issues. I think we had some consistency before I even saw this, and other issues we heard from the community in addition to what was in these focus groups. So I will work with the subcommittee and Jim to figure out an appropriate time when we can meet and start supporting getting work done on whatever we can to help move this along and make sure that we make it happen for our athletes and coaches and our whole community. Because I think this ties into, as Jamie said, with the restorative justice, that if the whole community is on board and understands what's happening, it's just better for everyone. So so Ness and Michelle, I volunteered us. Well, we'll start tackling some of these to help make it work.
Liza, I'm very thankful that you brought that up, because, you know, after meeting with you about it, and I really get excited about the idea that I felt like this work was going to be a great tool for us, minus that collaboration, and then to have your group ready and willing to jump in and help with us really chasing greatness, as it said in the presentation. And I'm looking forward to the work.
Yeah, so I'm just going to echo everyone else about, I was a little concerned with the small sample size. And I think I wouldn't have noticed this except for, we had the equity presentation right before, but Jamie had noted that during the courageous conversations, this had come up as students of color or students who are from these smaller groups not feeling like they belonged. And I noticed that those students were able to participate in the courageous conversations, but looking at the code counts, only point 28% of the code counts mentioned equity. So I thought that just kind of struck me, and I was concerned about that. But having said that, I think the recommendations in here are, a lot of them are really great. And I think it's some good things going forward. And I mean, I think the school committee, I mean, whatever we can do to help you move forward, I particularly like the guidelines around sports and extracurricular activities and how kids can navigate that, something we've heard a lot about. And then the H block idea too, I think that could be really good for a lot of students, including student athletes. I guess one other, one question, maybe this is just something for you and the wellness committee to talk to, but you mentioned a few times how to get, that you needed more times for coaches to collaborate and for coaches to give feedback to student athletes. What, have you thought about what that would entail? Like, is it a matter of more money, or is it a matter of a different job description? Or I don't know if you've thought about that, or if that's something you want to talk with the wellness committee about?
Yeah, I will talk to the wellness committee about it. I think that as, you know, I'm entering year five, the maze that was the high school when I initially started is much more familiar to me now, despite the COVID year last year. And it is quite literal, Carrie, in that it's some teams that have locker rooms and that are indoors, they have a natural space that they can, they can have conversations. Some teams have an area where a couple of coaches feel comfortable sitting down and talking, but we're at spaces at such a premium up there. Outdoor teams, it's hard. You know, it's hard for a baseball kid to wait around to want to talk to the baseball coach, where currently, this will change before we get to the spring, we don't have dugouts. There's not, there's not that place to, you're just in a fishbowl, and everyone can see you. And there are times that I think student athletes don't want to be seen going to talk to a coach. And so, you know, privacy, I think, is important. And so it's that, that space and trying to figure out ways to access space that I could help coaches do this. And then for group meetings, and, you know, we, I think that we have the space we need for seasonal meetings, but I really see a benefit in getting us all together a couple of times a year. And I think our coaches would thrive on the opportunity and embrace the opportunity to do so. And, you know, that could be to get them together for their own professional development, and maybe that, those dates need to be written into job descriptions to add as a requirement, or it could again be a topic that we collaborate as a staff and review for best practices.
Great. Yeah, I think the one other thing, it's this sort of a, an issue that I don't think we're alone on, but, you know, we talked about life lessons in there, and one of them is self advocacy. And that came up a lot of times about how, you know, the students should be dealing with this with the coaches. That should be the first step before the parents come in, and the coaches are trying to be clear about that. And I think that's a really important goal. I think the difficulty is then there are, in other parts of the report, there are talk about authoritarian coaching and about kids feeling pressured to play injured. And there's sort of a, kind of a paradox with that there, where if you're, we're expecting students to learn how to self advocate, and at the same time, it sounds like in some sports, there are concerns that they won't be listened to, and that doesn't reinforce that kind of behavior. Have you thought about, yes, no, just have you thought about how to navigate that?
So I think when we reference the authoritarian coach, I think much more it's about certain coaches displaying authoritarian qualities from time to time, and that we want to identify those and work with coaches to eliminate them. The days of saying in athletics that I'm the coach, it's my way or the highway, they're just, they're gone. Young people need to understand what's happening. And, you know, again, a sense of belonging, a sense of value and participation. So we, again, we want to eliminate that. When we talk about self advocacy, I think one of the things that we were trying to accomplish in identifying a goal was, yes, we want student athletes to identify, to take advantage of the safe time when they have questions and/or need to self advocate, but we're recognizing that there are a few obstacles there, and sometimes just being comfortable with the coach or whatever reason, there's a reason that there's an obstacle. And I think that we need to do more as a staff to help guide and model young people through what one of those safe time conversations would look like, instead of just expecting them to know how to do it. So that was the point that I was trying to get to with that. Was there one other?
No, and I think that you had mentioned having a guidance counselor potentially do some training. It's a great idea.
There are sports, you know, and I'm seeing it mostly on the college, though, but there are some sports psychologists that are doing some amazing work. And, you know, I'm not a psychologist, but I do steal bits and pieces to try to weave into some of the conversations that we're having with kids.
That's great. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing that, I see Bill Crean has his hand up. Bill, if you could unmute yourself and just give us.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. So I just wanted to go deal, address something Dr. Struzerio had said. Two years ago, the survey you referenced was crafted by our athletic director, and the survey didn't just go to parents, it went to all student athletes in the fall season. So it went to all student athletes and all parents. It was championed by the athletic director. The organization you mentioned had nothing to do with it, other than we were asked to sponsor a Positive Coaching Alliance event to train high school coaches, which is where the AD announced what he was doing, which was the end of season survey. And during that, he also announced he would do a mid-season survey. So I just want to be clear with you on that, that it was done by the athletic director at the bequest of individual parents that wanted to see. And this is very heartening to me, because that was a survey. It was anonymous. Two things that were mentioned tonight as recommendations to consider going forward. So, you know, I, I'm very happy to hear that, and, you know, was also happy to hear that, you know, end of year surveys or teacher surveys are embraced, because that survey ended very quickly. And maybe somebody, you know, can explain why that didn't continue. Because I remember the superintendent at the time said that the data that was incredibly valuable. So, and I just have one other question. If, I just want to understand how many student athletes we have. If we have 1,300 students in the school and 70% play a sport, is that accurate? Does that mean there's 910 kids in the school that play at least one sport? Do I have that right?
It's higher than that, Bill. It's closer to 78%.
Okay, so you talked to 16 students, and there may be 950 kids that play a sport at the high school?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, I mean, I too, like other people, echo, you know, that, you know, that it's kind of, that's difficult, that those kind of numbers, to see what you got. And again, I think doing these things are great, but I just wanted to say that I also think that those other tools, you know, are very valuable and should be considered. And I'm glad to hear that that might be the case going forward.
Yeah, Bill, I apologize for getting the history, or that, I had to get my story straight on that one. I apologize. I think the work we just did is the foundation for stronger studies, that they include far more people. So it's a point well taken.
Yeah, and I was concerned that there was a movement away from surveys and anonymity, and I'm glad to hear that that movement's coming back. So that's wonderful.
Great.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, good, good teaching is good teaching.
Thank you, Bill. Next is Andrew Turner.
Sure. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep. Hi, Andrew.
Hey, folks. My name's Andrew. I live on 172 Waltham Tuck Road. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I won't belabor it. 175 hours to talk to 16 kids and their parents is an extraordinary amount of time. I think the next 175 hours can be spent with much more scale results. But I've been trying to think about one way that you can separate the low-end problem. And there's two things. One is immediately figuring out the anonymous reporting structure for any kind of infraction that would happen at Duxbury. If that hasn't already happened, you don't need to talk to anybody else to make that happen. And I think you should set a goal to have that in place if it's not already for, for the fall season. So that's one. So that's one. Second thing is I think there was something about that parent feedback on coaches was quote unnecessary and invalid. And I happen to agree with, depending on when you take the feedback. And I agree that you're not coaching the parents. But as an example, one of the things y'all called that was communication and team meeting and commitment on the calendar. There are objective and measurable things that you can evaluate coaches on that have nothing to do with refereeing politics of overzealous parents. Then I will tell you as a as a parent of kids in sports, basic stuff like, do I know when the practices are? And will you have consistent ice time? And can I arrange a carpool? And did you have a coaches meeting and a captain's meeting, et cetera? Those are all things that are logistical boxes to check that I think help make the parents' life a lot easier, that allows the student athlete to participate fully because you're not worried about carpools and everything else. So I just wanted to just encourage folks to make sure that as a condition, I think of all of our investment in school athletics, if anything like Duxbury happens at Hangham High School, we should be ashamed. Like that is a condition of everyone's employment, I would say. And so if we don't have a procedure to deal with that immediately, that's the first thing we should do before we talk to anybody else. And I look forward to seeing the follow up reports. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else. I just want to thank you both again for putting in all of that time. And I think it's there are some great goals moving forward. I think it's going to be really great for the department. There is one other hand. Rena Patel.
Thanks for the presentation. Really great to see the work the district's doing. Just kind of touching on the Duxbury situation. I'm hoping you'll consider like setting a mark for high standards at the beginning of the year for all like student athletes. So explicitly stating, you know, biased races, nicknames, plays, et cetera, against athlete code. And that students are expected to be respectful to people of all backgrounds. If you can get students to commit to it from the outset with a simple conversation, it would kind of eliminate a lot of the small incidents. And also, you know, prevent having an incident like like what happened. And it would also go a long way in creating a more equitable system and encouraging BIPOC or marginalized students to feel more comfortable participating in athletics.
Thank you, Rena. Did you want to respond to that or?
I was actually just writing it down. I mean, we do go through. We do go through some of these conversations, but I think that taking advantage of the resources in the community to take additional steps to prevent something like that from occurring. And I don't know that there are too many times that we can reinforce that message.
Definitely. Well, thank you both for for everything and for hanging on. This is a very long meeting. So we appreciate you staying up till 10:30 to do this and and give us that report. And we just look forward to hearing how things go forward and let us know how we can help.
Thanks for the chance to do it. Thanks to Dr. Struzerio. It's been great. He's a former student athlete of Vine and then to be learning from him has been full circle and and very rewarding. Thanks again to Mary Ellen Haller and I'm looking forward to working with the wellness group.
Thank you. Okay, next, 6.4 to discuss the 2021-2022 school committee meeting schedule and act as appropriate. That's in the packet. Did anyone have any gross changes for this or are you happy with the calendar? Okay, I'll take the motion to approve the 2021 to 2022 school committee regular meeting calendar.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Michelle?
I.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the calendar is approved. So I'll let Sherry know and hopefully she can put that on the website for us. Next, 7.1, new business to receive notification.
Sorry about that. Still going.
Are you not on mute?
Yeah, Phil, you might want to mute yourself. Julie, could you mute him? Thanks. 7.1 is to receive notification of recent lane changes. Is that's in the packet as well. I don't know if Gary or Jamie have anything to say about that.
Yeah, we're going to be sitting down with the association to to discuss the information that was presented.
Okay, great. Thank you. Eight subcommittee and project reports. Michelle?
I guess my only update for the committee is on the MSBA and the Foster Building Committee have voted on a designer for the Foster School Project. Raymond Design Associates is the firm. They are out of Rockland. And so we voted to approve the contract and the expenses and the costs are in line with the funds allocated. So we are in good shape there. We're in right along.
Good news. Jen, do you have anything? Okay, Ness?
No, I don't have anything. And then I think it also says on the agenda, Warren signed, but there's nothing reported yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Carlos?
Nothing here.
Okay, Tim?
Good.
Okay, Liza? Nope. And I only have, Jen and I are going to be speaking with the Foster PTO on Thursday at their meeting. And that's it. All right. So nine is other items as may not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Michelle, you're muted.
Sorry, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Michelle?
I.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Bye.
And I'm an I as well. Meeting adjourned at 10:36 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.